This conference will now be recorded.
Final test, Brandon, you can hear us, right? And there's Jackie. Jackie, you can hear us. I see Brandon thumbs up. I see Jackie thumbs up.
Good morning. Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I'm not gonna get your coffee today, Jackie.
Aww. Thanks anyway, though. What's the matter?
Full all the time. And it's because I'm getting sleepy. But I can't.
I struggle every day, so.
I'm sure he didn't get home till almost ten. I was just because of my own suffer. Could've fed four people. And I ate it all. I don't like the waste.
Hate leftovers, right? Hate it. Hate leftovers, right?
Senator tried to call, just tried to call him back.
Oh, hopefully he didn't try to call me. Thank God. I'm not grounded.
I guess he's probably not gonna join us.
Why would they, how he can? Because he's an A. If he's doing his job, he's an A. And he's vice chair of that.
It's the doppelganger. Someone looks exactly like him. You can do both. T minus one minute?
Just in the heck. We're gonna slow it up right now. Where are you? Frank is ready. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We've got one member on, Brandon's on Zoom. Randy was supposed to join us on Zoom, but I guess what's the three of us? We do have a forum. Officially call a meeting order. First order of business would be to approve the agenda. Do we have any changes, Bruce? You did mention one thing.
Three things to note, Mr. Chairman. So during personnel today, you had a interest in the director of equalization. That discussion probably could take a while, so I would suggest that maybe you note that there'd be some personnel upfront and then personnel later on at the end of the meeting for potential executive session pursuant to 125-2-1's personnel. The other thing to note is, I think during highway department discussions today, under permits, I think Oz Enderby and some folks from the sanitary district are here to discuss a permit that was issued on a prior occasion, and some of the conditions they suggested modifications there, too. And then the other note is, at the end of highway business, originally you were set to consider an amendment to an agreement for improvement of section line that involves Roger Telling. He's in, he's obviously in the legislature, so that one's been deferred until March 14th. Otherwise, they don't have the changes.
Okay? Is everyone okay with the changes?
Move approval of changes on the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda with the changes. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflict?
I think I have one there. Carson, you approach me.
Oh.
Yeah. Same deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Brandon's not on. He'll probably have some, but we need to approve the minutes from the last, from the last meeting, January 3rd. Everyone have an opportunity to look over.
Also, will we approve the excellent notes?
I can second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for approval of the excellent minutes. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Auditor's account with treasure. Ms. Brandon.
This is as of December 31st, 2020. It looks like I have 2023 on the top. I will fix that. It should say 22. Total amount of deposits in the bank is $68,715,96.51. Included in that total are the $5 million at Colliers. The bank balance of $23,626,202.34. U.S. Bank, which is our Public Safety and Services Center Construction Fund, $38,400,17.99. Money Market, $1,600,1,685,376.18. Total amount of cash is $1,350. Total amount of checks in treasurer's possession is $55,002.00. Total amount of cash in transit by the treasurer is $3,102.96. Petty cash, $1,860, for a total of $68,772,921.49.
Thank you. What's your pleasure on auditor's account with treasure? Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of our finances. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Personnel, spread it.
I have a few, yep. I have a new hire in the highway department, Scott Courier, heavy equipment operator, one, grade one, base pay of $27.32. He is a full-time permanent employee, effective 1/18/2023. And the reason that that is prior to today's date is they had MSHA training last week, and they wanted to take advantage of that to get him trained in that.
Okay, let's see. We have three new hires. Can we do them all at once?
You can. We have two new hires. We have Scott, nope, three, I'm sorry. Yep, Scott Courier, Jackie Mooner. She is a full-time permanent correction officer, one, grade one, base pay of $21.23, effective 1/24/23. And Anthony Panza, deputy, one, grade one, base pay of $27.13, full-time permanent, will be February 20th of '23. No, she, that, she just asking for a cell phone pretty, yep. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna approve the new hires. Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion and second to, for the three new hires will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Brenda, can you hear me?
I can, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So I have a step raise for Tyler Sonny, full-time permanent deputy, two, grade three, base pay of $29.98, effective January 25th of '23.
This is the Sonny?
Yes.
Those are approved. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed, motion carried.
And then I had just two cell phone stipends, one for Anthony Panza. His will be effective February 20th, and his is $104 per month. And just the Lord, she is in planning and zoning, and hers will be $45 per month, effective 1/15 of '23.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the second one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, is this typical for that position, or is this the first time we've seen it?
That's, I, I don't know if Amber's ever had one. She's never had this position before, so I would assume that she's, you know, taking calls and working from her phone when she's away, or else Amber probably would not have asked her for it.
And then the second part of that question is, is that why it's lower? Because it's not as much use as the $90 ones?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
This is the one that will help transfer information electronically while Jeff is healing up.
That, that could be too, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know the details on it, so I apologize.
Satisfactory. Senator?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm good with it. In fact, I was gonna support it, so.
Thanks, Randy. Richard made the motion. I just need a second.
Did you second it, Derek?
I did.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Just send those minutes for me, please, so I don't get lost. Thank you.
Brenda's going through the, is that all of the?
Yes, that's all I have.
Step raises and new hires?
That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay, well, continue the rest of the personnel towards the end of the meeting. What's your pleasure on the bills, gentlemen? Everything, I don't know if somebody need to look at them. Is there any question? I move to approve the bills.
Second.
Presenting. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any travel requests?
I have none, Chairman.
Okay, we've got the amended resolution 2023-4.
I can, I can handle that, Chairman, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Um, when I got the original resolution from Amber, there were some updates done to it, and so I apologize, I did not have the current resolution on the drive. So just for transparency, I've got the current resolution on the drive and just need to amend it. The, what Amber spoke of was on there, and that's kind of what brought me to light. It was like, I don't see that on the one I have, so just, just so the public knows that this is the current resolution. I wanted to bring it forward so that the, the public knew.
Do we need to?
Make a motion to approve the amended? Yes.
Because we did approve it.
Yes, yeah, but.
Fees aren't changing, it's just the language.
Yes, yeah. The actual, some of the fees, she started talking about Platts and that. They had added some stuff, and I just, I didn't add that.
I'll move to approve the amended change with the planning and zoning.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the amended version. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Alrighty. Automatic budget supplement.
Yeah, we received.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, we're there, okay.
We received $7,754.54 for the repair of the eight, 2018 Dodge Durango. And we just need to supplement or automatically supplement this into the sheriff's travel budget so we can get the vehicle fixed.
Okay. I'll move to approve of the travel supplement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Brenda, can you hear me? I can't hear you. Can you hear him, Brandon?
Right now?
Can, can you hear us now?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
I made a motion. Okay, seconded it. Further discussion on the motion on emergency management? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. And we finally got the county fair agreement.
Yes. No changes.
That's what I saw.
I'll move to approve the county fair agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the fair agreement. No changes from the prior year. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Declare surplus, two nine-millimeter blocks.
Ready, we have two handguns that need to be declared surplus and trade, trade in, Brandon? Or Brandon. Brian, it started with a B, that's good. Sorry, please forgive me. Maybe you should just talk, huh?
This is just part of the process that I discussed with the board before. I oppose the big bills. I like to spread things out over a period of time. That's exactly what we're getting. We're uncreating some of our sidearms. So we'll see these bills pop up periodically over the coming year or two as we equip our office.
Okay. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'll move that we declare the gotten surplus.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to declare the two-block surplus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Raffles, do we have some raffles, Brenda?
Yes. We have a raffle from the lead Deadwood AAU Wrestling Club. And they will be raising money through two raffles, a 50-50, and then the Super Bowl selling squares. The raffle drawing will be taking place on February 12th of 2023.
I'll move we're not opposed to the raffle request.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
No.
Alright. Okay. Next item, order adjusting boundary of Aspen Hills Road District.
Go ahead.
You gonna lead the charge on that, Brenda?
I'll try. Alrighty, so the Aspen Hills Road District has asked to do a minor adjustment of boundaries to their road district. If you look at the map, it is this section up here that they want to exclude. They did not tax these people, so this follows the statute as far as actually deleting a parcel from the road district. Tom is also here. If you have any questions for him, they did hold a board meeting where they passed a resolution to delete this lot from the boundaries. This individual does not have, does not use the road within the road district. And so they had a letter from the landowner and then also from the road district stating that they wish to delete this parcel.
Did you have anything further you wanted to add, sir?
Very well, thank you.
Okay. What's your pleasure, gentlemen? Let's move to approve the amended road district. I'll second that. Okay, further discussion?
Is that, that borders the Forest Service on all sides there except the one?
Tom Fitch, Aspen Hill Road District. Yeah, yes, sir. So originally, that forty acres bordered lots that the current owner of the forty acres also owned, and he sold that, so he no longer has access.
Oh.
Through Aspen Hills, so the, the other three sides will be ordered by the Forest Service.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Abatements. Boy, you just popped in.
I just appeared out of nowhere.
Well, come on up here and, and bless us with your knowledge.
No, with my error. There's this particular property got planted, gave to another one, and even though we closed it, we had to delete the parcels, so what we're doing is it's a correction, just to make it go away because it doesn't exist anymore.
Stonehouse Enterprises, I think, is the owner of property, Danny.
It disappeared in the air. Wish it was that easy.
Kate, what's your pleasure on these ones?
It's Stonehouse Enterprises.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, Stonehouse Enterprises.
I'll move to approve the abatement of the Stonehouse Enterprises.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. There is a second abatement with the chairman of that, Mr. Courier.
Okay. I need it today's?
Twenty-fourth is today's. The parliamentarian. What happened here?
Called me Mrs. McGruder.
Who did?
Very deferential.
Children, please.
Thank you, Senator.
Alrighty, this abatement is for the United States of America. It has gone from taxable to exempt. It is an eight-month abatement. The total value was $78,180, and so the abatement will be for $54,205, and this is for 22 taxes payable in '23.
I think it's about twenty acres. It's just outside of Deadwood here, above the hospital. I assume it's probably, and Randy might know this better than me, contiguous with other, except BLM lands, but it is sort of out in that area, that vicinity.
Okay. I'll move to approve the BLM abatement.
I can second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion?
Does that affect our, did we get more settlements out of that? When that happens, or is that just?
We should.
Just, do we just lose? I, I don't know. It might be a de minimis amount, and I don't know what the timing of the transaction is, so I don't know that we realized anything this year, so I don't know. Yeah, I don't know that this is gonna be, that, that amount of acreage is just gonna be enough to.
It's gonna be a negligible amount, I was just saying.
It could be added to the acres itself, yeah.
I think our last item is appointment, employee appointment to the insurance committee.
I don't think we reported on that. I'm sorry.
I interrupted. Sorry. Everybody in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Employee, employment.
Hey, um.
Insurance committee.
Through the retirement of Alan Bonama, we are just requesting that we appoint John Bay, Highway Superintendent, to the insurance committee. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Point John Bay to the insurance committee. I'll second. Okay, motion in a second to appoint John. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, Sheriff, it looks like it's time for you to come up and.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to start off with some good news. I believe the board is aware, but all of you are aware, Lawrence County received a rebate from JSC in the amount of $33,548.00. And I compliment the board, and in particular Commissioner Sleep. He and I served on that committee, and there was some troubling times in the business sense here a few years ago, and Lawrence County had to make a decision as to whether or not to stay with them. And we decided to stay with them at the time, or she said the board did. And this is the benefit of that decision, so their business model is, is running very efficiently. Once again, the benefit of the Lawrence County.
Let's add that the last time we got a rebate from JSC was for nineteen, and we received it in January of 2020. Was the last time we received a rebate.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to somewhat defer to Dr. Alka. He originally asked for an incentive session. I believe that we can conduct that without having to do so, but I'll leave that decision to the chairman and Dr. Alka.
I agree.
We can merge into executive session if it gets into that territory.
Yeah.
So I draw the board's attention to actually three documents. They, they come from a company that I would recommend that we hired to conduct a, a study on our, essentially our radio systems, and it's kind of a wholesale study. We have been in the process for several years of updating all of our PSAP equipment. PSAP is just a fancy acronym for Public Safety Answering Point, or in other words, our dispatch center. Along this process, most recently, in 2022, we did some upgrades that revealed some concerning statuses in some of our equipment. And as you might recall, at the end of 2022, I asked the board to approve another study that was intended to basically get us to a point where we could function on a day-to-day level. This study is far more entailed, will take us well into the future. There's also a likelihood that this approach, that we could realize, or realize some savings down the road, because this company has no brand loyalty, which is to say, if we can find equipment that does the same thing at cheaper cost, then that's certainly a benefit to Lawrence County taxpayers. The scope of work that is offered by this particular organization is in three phases. The first phase comes at a cost of $29,000. Our staff has solicited approval from the 911 board to be able to use 911 funds to a percentage of 50% of that. So really what we're looking at is, in this first phase, $15,000 out of a 225 budget. It's not budgeted for, but I anticipate, because we are so early in the year, in all likelihood, through some best business practices and hopefully some salary recapture, we can accomplish our task within our existing budget.
Well, the funds you just received and the item before probably would.
Different fund, right?
Fit with that, wouldn't it?
I think it would have designated a fund, I think.
It's going, it's going in the general fund.
Oh, does it? Kate?
So general funds, my bad. So general funds, uh, my, so there's an availability to there, but I think we can, I think we can accomplish phase one within the scope of our existing budget. So I would ask, uh, Mr. Chairman, for either permission, uh, for me to sign the contract or permission for the chairman.
Kate, I'll need, uh, Chris on the signature, but I think, I understand that, uh, you and probably Paul as well have looked really hard into this, and this is a move that needs to be taken, so I, I'm in support of it.
Mr. Chairman, the draft agreement was included in your packets. Uh, it doesn't, it can be either the chairman or the sheriff, it makes no difference. Whatever the motion would be is appropriate.
Okay.
Please, uh, I gotta raise the type of topography that we experienced in last year.
Well, that's a, that's a question I don't think that we specifically asked them, but they are fully aware of what our topography is. And, uh, I don't have any doubt that they can do the job, uh, very well, and they do kind of recommend it by others in the industry.
Okay. I'll move, we approve the request from the sheriff.
Richard, does your motion authorize the chairman or sheriff to sign?
Authorized, chairman.
Thank you.
Second that. Kate, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, lastly, uh, Mr. Chairman, advise the board that, uh, our construction project on the hill, PSSC project continues to move forward. Um, they're inching things out, uh, working around and with the weather, against the weather, but, uh, they have internal footings now forward, um, in Area C, and, uh, that's good news. So every week, uh, provides more weather challenges, uh, until we get through March, but, uh.
Yeah, we've got some coming ahead, so.
Uh, from, from what I hear, everybody's happy with, uh, where they're at in the process.
I think we have, we have one today, correct?
That's correct.
Any further questions for the sheriff while he's here? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Brendan, uh, yep, we're right on the money. Uh, it's a time and place for a public hearing. For a supplemental, supplemental budget. Capital assets.
Yes, if you remember, uh, Tim Hudson, Director of Equalization, was present, um, last meeting to state that his, uh, uh, vehicle was not available in twenty-two and was asking to carry the, uh, funds forward to this, and this is basically the housekeeping to place those funds into his capital assets so he can purchase the vehicle.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the body of the room that would care to speak for or against this, uh, this item, in your, please stand, state your name and your address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the board. I don't have anything. I don't. Although that we approved, uh, supplemental budget. Replacing.
Second, second.
You seconded it.
I did.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Brendan and Randy, you still here? It's okay.
Yes.
Right. Mr. Bay, where did he go? We're ready for you, sir.
Um, where do you guys want to start here? Took care of the newer, the new hire.
We approved that.
Yep. Do I do the approach permit?
Yep.
We get an approach permit from Carson Sleep here. We all got that in the package. It was already started to be constructed and he was stopped. So we went and looked at it and everything was, it's a good, good approach. There's already an existing approach, uh, like forty feet away to the west. I did talk to him and Carson said he would remove that approach, allowed to put this other one in. It's a, it's actually a better location where he's putting it now, much better location for site distance. Um, he did install a pipe in it. It doesn't need it. It's at the top of the hill, but it, it was raining in many directions. I told him that you really wouldn't need that pipe.
His grapp is probably making me toe the line.
I think his grapp is making him toe the line. He's the one that stopped him, so. But all's good. I mean, he did make your comment. He would remove if you guys required, if wanted him to approve that existing approach. You know, they're, they're right next to each other.
You see a problem with it?
I don't see a problem with it at all. Um, I, I just feel that you guys sometimes don't like too many approaches right together.
Sure. Gentlemen on the screen, Commissioner Sleep has recused himself from this item, so we may need your help here.
I, I just got one quick question. I think I heard it.
Kate, let me, we got a motion. I'll go in second now. Discussion. With a mo, our motion was for approval. Brendan, go ahead.
Um, did I hear there was an existing approach that he was going to remove?
If we require it. And our highway superintendent has told us that it doesn't pose any problem whatsoever. It's in a pretty open area.
So they're far enough apart? How, how far apart is the, the existing and the, and the new approach?
They're like forty feet apart.
So why would we, why would we approve the second one without removing the first one?
Is, there's a cattle guard in the picture. Is the cattle guard going to go into that approach?
The cattle guard's gonna go into the new approach.
Into the new approach, so, uh, there would not be a gate to move cattle off the road. Is that correct?
There'll be a gate there.
At the cattle guard, or would, would the old approach work as the gate?
It could be either way.
Yeah, that looks like that would be a good, uh, solution.
Yeah.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Plannigan?
I, I did. I, I'm trying to see if I, I don't know that I have the picture. I'm looking right now to see if I find it on, on the drive.
The new approach has a cattle guard. The old approach has, the old approach could be used to allow the movement of cattle on and off. We just lost.
I, I see what you're talking about. So, so normally that gate would stay closed and the cattle guard would be utilized, but when you need to call cows, you can open up the gate.
Correct.
That's, yeah. That, in, in rural areas, I've seen that before. It seems pretty common and, and if, that, that makes more sense to me now. Thank you.
Yeah, I just think we need to note on the approach, uh, the approach permit that we allowed this and why we allowed it because some other areas we haven't allowed it. So I think we just need to note that that, that approach would remain in effect for movement of livestock. And then we don't paint ourselves in the corner when the next guy comes in and wants to approach twenty feet away. So if, if the motion do isn't, would be amended to include that language, I'd feel much better.
Commissioner Jennings, would you care to?
I, I, I think that should be noted. Absolutely. Yep.
Kate? And who seconded it?
You did.
I did. Okay. My second as well. Kate? We have a motion in a second on the, on the floor for, to allow this approach permit. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Randy, did you vote nay?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Came in late. I apologize.
He's been in the Senate too long already.
Yeah, they spoiled.
There are several gates up and down, down that road, uh, not far apart because it's pretty steep and rolling country.
Do you have that one signed, John?
Okay.
John, just for point of reference, John, since I got you here, uh, in case I get asked this question, what do you need to, to get an approach? Uh, for any time you build a fence and put a gate in, or you just hope to have an approach?
Yes, we never required them for just gates. It's, it's if you actually build a, a, a structure or a pad onto the county road. If the ditch stays in place and you just can put a, an entrance into the field, we've never required a, uh, an approach permit for that.
Okay.
Only if it's something built that attaches to our road.
But if you dump a load of dirt in the ditch, you get into anything.
Then it becomes an. Okay, yes, sir.
They're not taking it out, Eric.
An alteration is what it sounds like, basically. You're altering things anyway.
That's right.
Meaning that will affect our.
Sounds like Commissioner, uh, Jennings is busted.
Okay, next item is authorization to advertise.
Statute of limitations on that.
Supplies, yep. Um, authorizing, asking authorization to, uh, to go with bid for our annual supplies, and we opened the bids on March fourteenth. That would be for all of our magnesium chloride, our gravel and asphalt, the icing sand, and, uh, need precast colors.
Standard stuff.
They, he can just do that. We don't need a.
You just need a motion to advertise and set the bid opening.
The move. Kate, we have a, a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then the next one would be the motion for the, our chip seal project. Um, to chip seal North Rochford, McWiggin and Old Bell, and that would be, to open the bid on February fourteenth.
Okay.
I'll move, we open the bids for chip seal on February fourteenth.
For, uh,
Advertising?
Advertising. I'll second that. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero late spring.
Yes, we got the, the letter sent. We've already contacted the state as far as the roads that would be posted are the same as in the past, and I'll just need the, the motion from you guys to, to get it put into place, send the letter of when the approximate date we post a load limit is on, which is to be determined.
So moved. So moved with the letter also in the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Letter requested enforcement by.
It's in there.
That's the same one here.
Yep.
Utility certificate. For your, your bridge project.
Yep. Uh, this is for the bridge project on the, the rehab project on the Nemo Road. And, uh, we did get the landowner has, uh, has signed and lowerized, and now we just need our chairman's signature and lower, and then we can send this back to the state, and then it gets, uh, that, that opens up the next part of this discussion a little bit, is that's gonna, you know, this rehab was gonna be on for the twenty-four on our five-year plan. I'd like to see if we could go to bid with this as soon as possible. This project could get done this year. If we could do that one, we could take, put that to the twenty-three, and then our, uh, Whitewood Service Road Bridge by Wheeler Lumber. We are doing, I met yesterday with Rose on that, and, uh, we, we're going forward with some tree removal, but we're still waiting on, uh, the, uh, stream mitigation from the Army Corps of Engineers, and that bridge is not gonna get done this year.
Yes, it's gonna take some time on that.
That, that one's gonna be done. So I, I guess, you know, my recommendation, for what it's worth, is I'd like to swap those, because this bridge is, it's ready. It's, it's ready to go. It's, as soon as that's sent to the state, it'll go to bid, and there are contractors that could take that job on, I'm told this year, so.
Sounds good.
A lot better chance to get that one done this year. This one, more than likely not.
Okay.
What effect of the budget does that have? Are they similar costs?
Well, the rehab bridge would be quite a bit cheaper than our forty percent portion of the, uh, Whitewood
Yeah.
Service Road Bridge. So it would be less money. We're gonna end up, we have eight-hundred thousand put aside this year's budget for that, the Whitewood Service Road Bridge that we're not gonna be using, and I think it was, the preservation estimate was three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, three-hundred, so. Um, you know, it, it would come in under our budget. Okay, Commissioner Diver?
So if we do approve this, when, when's the, when would it be done and when would the request for the funds be from the DOT? Because usually that's much later in the process.
The rehab, the rehab projects, yeah, you get billed as they do it. I, I'm told you can do it either monthly or you can do it at the end of the project, but, um, from what I gathered yesterday, that that, there are contractors in the rehab industry that are ready, though, that you could probably get that done this year. Uh, I would know probably more by the next meeting when, when we could go to bid for sure. The project is actually bid-ready right now. It's really just waiting on the state on this offer.
Well, what are the chances, if any, that both of these would be constructed and have to be, uh, paid in this year? I don't think that, even if the second bridge went, that we, our payment request would be in twenty-twenty-three. It'd probably be in twenty-twenty-four based on how the DOT works.
Well, and that's very possible. The, the Whitewood Service, I, I, I almost give you a hundred percent chance. I, that's my gut feeling. We're not gonna be even close to having that one bid-ready by this year. Even if they, if it goes to bid, it would never get done this year. People would never be.
So one last question on the rehab. Uh, is the, uh, DOT doing the construction management, or does the county hold that contract now?
Uh, the state is in charge of that.
Okay. Well, that, that being said, I think it's a great idea. I think we should move forward.
Kate, wait.
Again, I, I would know more next, at the next meeting on whether, you know, when the bid letting would be. We'd have a better idea next meeting for sure on that.
Just want to leave this for informational and discuss it at the next meeting then, or what?
For sure, but we do, we need that document signed so we can get it to the state. That is the next.
Right away in utility?
Yes.
I'll move, we sign it right away, agreement.
Utility right away, and then the temporary.
That's right.
I'll second it. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yes, absolutely.
Doc, for purposes of next agenda on the fourteenth, what should I caption this, this, uh, this continued matter as? The, I lost track of it. Which bridge is it?
Uh, this would be the, the, the Nemo Rehab Bridge.
Nemo, okay, thank you.
And I got it. There's a number on it if you'd like the number.
Forty, forty-one, two, thirty-eight, two, six, two.
Forty-one, two, thirty-eight.
Two, six, two.
I think I got them all signed.
Yep, yep. It's Brendan's sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, um, is that, reset that stuff for you?
Yes.
Okay, the next, uh, item on here, I have to come back on this, is the draft resolution of the city of Spiritfish and, uh, the county for some of the trading out, uh, for services and different things on our roads. And, uh, the city council passed it the other night and signed it.
They, I think they passed it in theory, Mr. Chairman. Um, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and so I checked with Ashley, and so in your package, you'll see a copy of what that were considered, and it's still in draft fashion. And so as, as far as I know, that the city of Spirit, Spiritfish would support the resolution. It would include, the additional was a point-two-five miles of the St. Onge Road to the city, city, um, city limits, but it would exclude, uh, uh, um, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seventh street, right? You had counter proposed that, that the city take that on, so would not include that. So basically to summarize, it's your original deal with the city most recently, plus the addition of that quarter of a mile of the St. Onge Road. And so if you agree in principle, then, uh, the city is, is looking for, uh, a cost share to hire a surveyor or to find somebody who could create the legal descriptions for these, and then we would come back to you at a later point for consideration. Again, I think the DOT has their own rules about having a public hearing on this and that kind of thing, so we'd have to go through that process. So this is just to get sort of tacit approval that I could pass along to the city that we could. approval that I could pass along to the city that we can move forward. And then would you be willing to share in the cost?
Okay, I, I, I just want to say a few though. In the past, we've had real issues trying to uh. Get along with the city, I guess, so to speak, just in plain terms. But uh. We're moving forward. Uh, we've sat down with them and, and they've been willing to have these discussions and the give and take. I think we're, we've started something that I want to continue. And uh, I think we'll see some great things happen out of this. So I support what we're doing here. The twenty-seven stuff. Uh, in the past, we've been out there. We've taken care of that. We are in the business of taking care of gravel roads. So I support this and I'd like to keep the ball rolling ahead and, and uh, nothing is really set in stone here. If we have issues, I know in speaking with the mayor that they're be more than willing to sit down and have further discussions if, if something erupts to be a real problem for us.
I'll move that we uh, proceed with the uh. Resolution with the city to do this. The Hillsview, Hills Street, St. Andrews Road and also the industrial drive on twenty-seventh Street.
And uh, Richard, would you agree to uh, cost share, probably fifty percent of any costs associated with this?
Well, I think we should.
Yeah. Okay. It's probably a couple thousand dollars.
I'll second it for the. Uh, Brandon seconded it. We have further discussion.
Uh, still a little unclear, I guess, and have concerns about the county taking over uh, the gravel road there, twenty-seventh and industrial. Uh, if we don't, if the county doesn't have the authority to grant. Or does, I guess that's the question. Does the county have the authority to grant uh, right away or easements approaches? Or is that the city's responsibility on the city's side of the jurisdiction of the road? Bruce, can you weigh in on that?
Well, so it gets complicated. Uh. There's a statute that says that. The state can maintain a, a road inside city limits if it, if it wants to. Uh, so it doesn't have to maintain, the state does not have to maintain a road inside city limits. There's no statute, a similar statute for counties. So I have an argument that the county cannot maintain a road inside, inside city limits. Unless, uh, unless there's a, unless you have a. Home rule. Usually counties only have the authority that's vested in by statute. There's no stat, there's no statute or authority for a county to maintain a road inside city limits. That question has never been litigated and answered, right? And so I, I don't ever give up that argument. But to the extent that the county has jurisdiction over a road, theoretically, you can, you can grant permits for utilities and, and approach permits and those kinds of things, knowing that ultimately it's right next to the city and the city will be taking it on um, sooner than later, right? And so it makes sense that maybe the city would want to have more say in what's being, what's being done in that area. But they know that uh, in this instance, and they're willing to defer to you for the time being. I guess is how I would say that.
Yeah, I think they would uh. We would have discussions when those issues come up. I don't think we'd be left out of it.
And formerly, uh, Eric, the, the county did have twenty-seventh street and industrial drive, I believe, but as part of the airport sort of swap or transaction, uh, the city agreed to take on those roads. So they're, they're giving those back. If that makes any difference.
But that was before it annexed, also probably the county had that. No, I don't know if that was the case.
I don't know that much has changed out there since that Randy might know better than me. Um, I don't, I don't know that much has changed in that regard.
I'll just add, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that the airport's been annexed for a long time. Um, there, I don't know. There's been some annexation to the north, but I don't think there's anything recent. Also, Mr. Chairman, I need to leave the meeting now. So thank you.
Okay, well, let me call about here. Is any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed? Looks like it's unanimous. Motion carried.
I'll let the city know then. Thank you.
Do you have anything further for us, John?
Uh, I think we got some. Jill, we're here to talk about.
Oh.
The uh. The uh. Waterline on the Brownsville Road.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in your packets, there's a letter dated January sixteenth from the. Sanitary Districts and Oz Enderby, I think is here to speak more on behalf of that entity. And they're talking about an application that I think that was issued back on October twenty-fifth. And Oz has included some background materials on there and otherwise I would defer to him. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Oz Enderby, Deer Mount Sanity District. Just wanted to preface with a little bit of history about where we are, how we got to where we are. Deer Mount Sanity District was formed a little over four years ago to address a failing water system that was privately owned. And the owner was in uh, quite a bit in the rears and Lee Dedwood Sanity District provided our water. Um, subsequent to that time, two thousand and eighteen, the property of Mystic Minor PD and our water system was acquired through a foreclosure by the investors. The investors dumped a bunch of money into the system to keep it operating and marketed the properties. And then uh, about, about mid of last year, PD Resources purchased the Mystic Minor PD as well as the water system. In uh, December of last year, we worked out an arrangement with PD Resources to acquire the operation and ownership of the water system. And we did so in an agreement that would allow us to provide water to the Deer Mount Village Development. Um, throughout this whole process, we've gone through, in uh, twenty twenty, we, we were approved funding by State Revolving Fund for the initial project. Um, we had to do cultural surveys. We had to get the state historic preservation organization to sign off on everything we're doing. Then along comes the COVID issues and supply chain issues and um, inflation. So in last year in September, we had to go back to the SRF and DNR to request additional funding, which we were, we were awarded. In the meantime, we've gone through the whole process of obtaining easements across prior property, borrowing under uh, the Rochford Road as well as the Highway fourteen A. All of that was approved. The permits were submitted, both permits were submitted by AD two S, who is the engineer for both entities, both sanitary district and keying resources Deer Mount Village. On October twenty-fifth, I think it was, the commission approved the Deer Mount Sanity Permit with a list of stipulations, which, the majority of which we were not aware of. When we came to, when Joe Noble and myself came to the meeting that morning, we are rather surprised when uh, the highway superintendent presented our permit with these stipulations. Then first, I went and reviewed the other permit that was submitted by uh, AD two S for the road construct, for the water line construction on Terry Summit Road under the key resources Deer Mountain Village. No stipulations whatsoever, no special bonding requirement, no issues about pilings in the road. So it became apparent to the district and the trustees that there seemed to be a discrepancy of why one permit was issued with no special stipulations, doing exactly the same work. And our permit was issued with all these special stipulations. So I prepared kind of a, a, a narrative there to kind of explain our position. Also, an issue, a permit was issued to Black Hills Electric Co-op for bringing power to location of our future pump house. Again, along Inglewood Road for, for road crossings. No issues with excavation, no issues with pilings in the road, no special warranties, no special bonding. So um, what I'm in front of you today and asking is what uh, the sanitary district position is, we're going to reject the permit that was issued on the twenty-fifth. I've talked with Mr. Bay where we are requesting that we will go back and resubmit our application and it'll be asked for the ordinance, the county ordinance zero seven dash zero, exactly specifies and spelled out, issues regarding to these utility permits and a road right away. Couple things. Um, we're a government entity. We're taxpayers' monies. Whenever, when the, when and if this all takes place, when we're doing our construction, when we're digging in the road, we're putting pilings in the road, everything we do is vet contract documents that have been reviewed by the state of South Dakota. When it comes to payment, payment is not issued until we sign off, our engineer signs off, the county signs up on the condition of the road. There, there is no issue in that that road will be restored exactly as it is when we start. So. Um, that's kind of where we are. So I throw that out, that we will resubmit our application and work with Mr. Bay uh, based on the county ordinance oh seven dash zero. Any questions?
Yeah, we did, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we did talk about this at our meeting and there was. We didn't uh. Raise any, raise any questions at that time.
You know, as I said, we were surprised at the time. Um, uh, Mr. Noble and I had no awareness. We had met with the highway superintendent, the David Ford, and went through the entire project. He did not, at that point in time, he did not bring those issues up other than the ones that we started on there, which we had already said we would do. So we were taken back by the, by the, the addition of the other stipulations and the discussion that took place. I believe it was Mr. Diver that indicated that instead of the five thousand dollar surety bond, it should be changed to thirty-five thousand. No justification, no need. It's an expense of the taxpayers that is unwarranted.
Well. And we talked to that, why there, I think this is quite a longer, bigger project. That's why uh, Randy mentioned thirty-five thousand, not thirty-five thousand dollars, just a check written to the county and put on the auditor's desk and when you're done, if you invest that stipulation money, you get your money back.
Yes, and we understand that. But by the same token, there isn't no stipulation to have that bond increase for key resources, which is doing exactly the same at work. They're, they're installing a twelve-inch water line in Terry Summit Road, not stipulated.
Uh, Bruce, you wanna?
Just to clarify, I take no issue with any of this, but maybe John or Oz, you can answer the question. So to compare the two permits that are, we're talking about here. So they both involve installing the water line. Um, so in the, in the first permit that was issued, was it to key resources? So they're installing the water line parallel to the road surface in the ditch. Is that where, is that where they going across?
Oh, across.
There, so, so what, what length did they, what length did they occupy the right of way or did they cross?
Similar, maybe, uh, maybe a couple hundred feet shorter, but it's fairly similar. I would say the two watering projects are fairly identical. Um, in terms, one's twelve inch, one's six inch, but in terms of pipe installation, it's fairly.
Yeah, the length of ours is about six inches of a mile. The length there is about half mile.
Okay, so I think that was sort of maybe an issue here is what were the relative distances of those comparable permits?
They're very similar.
Well, that was my understanding at that time that uh, uh, you were going to use a part of one of the lanes on the road for your dip. It was when you dug out in the road.
No, the, uh, the proposal would be that we talk with the highway superintendent, we'd be in the shoulder of the road. Our trench would be five feet wide. Uh, pilings would be approximately ten feet wide. The road is thirty-four feet wide. So that leaves seventeen feet per traffic to not be impaired. Part of the requirement is, is that we do not impair the traffic in any way, shape or form. We cross the road now in one place. Again, it's stipulated that we do that and keep the traffic going over. So we, we agreed to all that. We really just, we have an issue with the, uh, why there was a special surety bond requirement when, as a government entity and before the contractor gets paid, that road has to be back to the acceptance of your highway superintendent before that contractor ever gets paid. That goes through Black Hills Council Government, goes through the state revolving fund, our engineer, and us, ourselves as the owner. So there is a positive assurance that that road will be back and maintained as it was when we started our project.
Commissioner Flanagan, you have?
Yes, I do.
And I'll just make a couple of comments. Um, I don't think that Brownsville Road or the Inglewood Road and the Terry Peak Summit Road are a one-to-one comparison based on the traffic. Um, and I think in my understanding of the discussion, when I voted for, for the increased bond, it was, and it was the same discussion we had with, with extending the warranty, is if that were to subside in the next thirteen months instead of twelve months, that we're gonna have to address that. There's so much more heavier traffic on that road than there is on Terry Summit. And the concern was if that ditch or shoulder doesn't get compacted quite right or there's something, I mean, water lines are water lines are water lines. You dig a hole six or eight foot deep and you put dirt back in it, it'll, it's gonna subside unless you really are careful about it and it still does anyway. And I think that was a concern that was brought up. At least that's why I voted the way I did, is the assumption of the heavy traffic on that road, uh, the concerns about, about the, the, the substance, that when it subsides, when it, when it starts to pack back in, that there may be an issue down the road. Um, I, I guess I don't, I don't see that it's terribly unreasonable. I, I, I understand some of uh, Mr. Enderby's points. Um, but much like what was discussed earlier, that's a check that just basically sits in the auditor's office until everything has been met and then you give it back. I also understand they are a governmental body. But when it gets, it was on the contractor to make sure it was done correctly. It's not on, it's not on the water system or the water boards thing to make sure it's done correctly. It's make sure the contractor gets it done correctly and that their efforts don't result in taxpayer money having to be spent to correct an issue down the road. That was my, my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, good, uh, good point, Mr. Diver. What I want to address, you brought up traffic. For six years, I have driven Brownsville Road, seven days a week, ten months out of the year. I am very familiar with traffic on Brownsville Road. Me, it is not that heavy. Oftentimes, I would not encounter anybody else. There is a quarry and occasionally there is traffic with uh, trucks from the quarry. Um. Brownsville Road in that area that we're talking about, there are five permanent residents that typically use Brownsville Road. If you look at Terry Summit Road in the summertime, there is the same traffic. Most of the traffic we see in the summertime is ATV and UTV traffic on those two roads. Um, Terry Summit has approximately five uh, residents as well as short-term vacation rentals off of Terry Summit Road. So there, when it comes to traffic, there is, there is some comparison, but very little difference between the two roads. So again, going back to what uh, we proposed is to submit our application per the ordinance and addressing the um, highway superintendent's concern in regards to how that road will be restored when the construction is taken.
Chief, Bruce?
So based upon Oz's comments, it would seem to me that there's not actually a question for you today that the permit is going to be resubmitted. I understand that.
That's what we would.
And, and so I think maybe you've heard some comments. I, so I would say that there's no action to be taken. And now John is, is now in charge and he's heard some different points of view. So I would think that maybe what would want to revisit this back on your meeting on February fourteenth and have the, um, have John issue his recommendation then if there's any, anything that's different.
Right, that sounds good. We're, we're reasonable to that.
All right, February fourteenth.
January fourteenth?
February.
February fourth, yeah. Thank you.
Assuming that you guys are gonna actually submit it, right? You, you got, okay, fair enough?
Okay, I don't know. Thank you.
No, no. Where are we at, Bruce? Can we transition? Um, I think we are now um, up to Amber's uh, matters. Can we take a quick break?
Absolutely, take a quick break.
Thank you.
That's the tank right there.
Yeah, that's the.
That's it.
Oh, do you want me to go back to that picture, or you?
No, I was just gonna ask some, alright. Uh, I was gonna say, the well was twelve hundred feet deep.
Thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty, and the, uh, uh, how far up in the pipe did the water rise?
Um, gosh, I don't know off the top of my head how far they went to their state and water level inside of it. Uh, fifty or sixty feet, I believe is where it was at inside there. We have a flow rate of about thirty-three gallons per minute out of that, with our pump system side of it.
Three gallons.
Yeah, so they did a drawdown test on it, they did everything according to what the state was requiring. We stepped very cautiously through this entire process as all the problems that I had in board with other parts of this, to make this happen, be done correctly.
So you're running it into that tank there so you can get pressure going out?
We're pressurized, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, um, I believe he's met what the commission had requested before, if you remember, you guys had had me hold any, um, final, finalized anything for any buildings they had going on up there. That's kind of where they're at, is they'd like to know if it would be okay to start doing some final.
We did get CEOs.
Yeah, certificate of occupancies. Yep, and how many, you have two that you're ready for, right?
Right.
So we've been doing, we've been doing building permit inspections on all of them, but we just held any certificate of occupancies until we were finalized with this. So that's kind of where they're at. If you're comfortable with the well information they provided, if so, I just need to know if it's okay to issue some certificate of occupancies up there.
Okay, so I've got, made a motion to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, second. Was yours a motion?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Uh, yes, uh, on the, this ordinance discussion, can we put that back, but we take care of the plats?
Um, that's up to you, yeah, if you wanted to. What else did we have, I think that was?
So let's just go on to the layout plans for White Buffalo Properties.
Okay.
Are you gentlemen okay with that, moving this item in our, our, uh, discussion to the, do the plats first?
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, and I don't know if anybody's gonna be here for plats today, I didn't really hear. So, this layout plan, it's just a layout plan, it's pretty simplistic, but whenever we have a layout, I usually have it come before you guys as well to make sure there's nothing that looks weird. Um, currently, the green line shows lot six and seven, the way that it's going, the red dotted line is the old lot line. Um, they're basically just flopping it, it's, it's not changing density or anything, they're just switching the lot line. Um, pretty easy, they'll have to have access to that back lot off of their own easement as we move forward with the plat.
So it, it, this is Park Forest?
It is.
And it takes five acres per house in Park Forest, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no, you can have a two acre minimum, five acre average.
Okay.
So you can go down to two acres.
Okay, I understand.
So these are existing lots, lot six and seven already exist, but instead of having the lot line go this way, they want it to go this way.
Sure, okay, yeah, thank you for the clarification, because I was confused with three and point six eight acres on lot six eight.
Yep, so it's just the overall, um, kind of.
For the total density.
Total density, like if it's eight per forty, you can have eight, you can have five of them being two acres if you want, and then the remainder would stay a large lot.
Okay, understood, thank you.
He started driving the cluster. And. Signing and zoning's recommendation was approval.
Approval for layout plan, yep, so they would go forward to preliminary and final plats if they decide to, if you guys are comfortable with that.
I'd move to approve we're drawing with lot lines.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Preliminary and final plat, Jimmy Jordan.
Okay, so this one, um, I guess Bob kind of knows the background to this one, this one, it's come forward a couple different times. Um, originally, a couple of years ago, you guys required him to do a fire plan, so he did go back and do that, did the full fire plan, did all the work. Did everything, completed it, so we finally have the completion letter for the fire plan. And then, when it first got submitted to us, there was some concern with, um, the access, so originally, if you look at this, there's an old, uh, where's my cursor at, there's a thirty-foot access easement that ran right along this, on this other load, and it goes all the way back to this load back here. And Bruce knows a little bit more about this, but there was, um, I guess there's been some disputes between the landowners over here and this gentleman with access. So, he opted to alleviate, we'll say, the concern by, instead of trying to utilize that thirty feet on his side, on the other side. He is opting to just go ahead and do a whole, um, sixty-six foot private access easement, all on his own property, to be able to get to those lots. And he's trying to break each lot off for his kids, is what he's doing. So he, there is a structure up here, this is his house here, on the ten acres, and he's keeping that himself. And then enough acreage for each of them to have their own, and then the access is taken care of on his own property versus trying to utilize that thirty foot that's on the other side. Um, and this was kind of after back and forth with planning and zoning, this is what he opted to do, and, and it works, it meets the zoning requirements. Um, it is a private access, not public, so he wanted it that way, and that's fine, he can have it as a private access easement. So, um, I think overall, this meets the requirements. Um, we did get the fire plan letter, and we did require him also to do a forest service permit, um, because this Starview Lane. Um, it, it's kind of weird, but it comes off of Pacama, is where it starts, so Brownsville Road, then Pacama Road, and then way at the end of Pacama is the Starview Lane, and it has to cross some forest service stuff. So he did go and get his forest service permit as well, and it took about two years, so he's been working on this for a while. But.
Trying to keep his grandkids close.
Yeah, and I think the motion from both planning and zoning after this version came in was recommendation of approval for preliminary and final plat.
The dotted line still represents thirty-six feet and sixty-some feet there, but the dotted line is on the solid line now.
Say, I'm.
See the planning and zoning, uh, identified that in there.
Or, originally, yes, originally, yes, so I always leave the staff report to what the original request was, and then if you keep reading, the second part said, but then he updated it. So the second, this is the, the corrected version where he put all of it on his side. Originally, his original request was thirty feet on each side, and they just decided that wasn't gonna work with that thirty feet not really being, there was issues with the neighbor.
Okay, what's your pleasure? I'd move to approve the preliminary and final plat for.
Do you need them separate, or how do you want to do that? Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the preliminary as well as the final, uh, following, uh, planning and zoning recommendations. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, motion will say aye, alright. It's Commissioner Flan, Commissioner Flanagan, are you still with us?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, well, just bark up loud if you want to speak. Okay, um. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a preliminary and a final plat for, um, Majestic Heights, this is an amended preliminary. The original preliminary, just called it out, is two H, and then they never final platted two H, but, um, now they're trying to change that. So two H is being broken into two different tracks, we have two H one and two H two. So it's a twenty-seven point eight-six acre lot, and then a two point five-zero acre lot, I think that's a five.
Looks like.
I think that's right, so, um, and then they're trying to break off that two point five, and so as part of that, they had to redo an amended preliminary, because the original was just two H. Um, so they did an amended preliminary, and then the final plat for two H one and two H two. Um, this is out in Majestic Heights, uh, roads are in, um, you guys have approved those already. So, everything's there, it meets the requirements, he is still working on the water. Um. They're, they're in, but if you remember, this was a multi, multiple tanks were going in, and they're having, they, they don't have all the tanks in yet, because it's hard to get some of the parts. Still getting there, but it's, I don't see any issues with any of it on this particular area.
Is it in this area, uh, is that where the guard rail is?
Um. I don't know off the top of my head if anything, it might be up on the upper side, like up this way. It's not right down in front here, um, because this is literally right off of Mattson Lane, so when you come down Mattson Lane, you're gonna take a right, that gets right there.
It's got an hard hill on the map, just exactly where we're at.
Yeah, so Mattson Lane is coming in right here, if you see my cursor, that, this is off the highway, so here's the highway, you come in. Here's Mattson Lane, and you take that first, it's that first right.
Okay.
So, I think if anything, you'd have to go up quite a ways to get to that area.
Sounds like.
I believe that's correct.
I, I think it's quite a ways up the hill yet, before you hit the guard rail.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks, Brandon. So this is preliminary and a final, um, your guys' call.
amended.
Amended preliminary and then a final, so we'll need two different motions.
I'll, I'll probably approve the primary.
Preliminary.
Preliminary, go.
I can second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the preliminary.
It's a hard word to say today.
Further discussion, hearing or seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, now the final.
We'll re-approve the final.
Okay, I'll second that, further discussion? Seeing or hearing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Alright, Black Hills Properties, final plat.
Alright.
What's the next process in that, if it's already approved? What, what do you?
Yours?
For yours, nothing, we just have to get it recorded, so your taxes need to be paid in full.
Right, what next, or?
You, you can pay, yep, she won't have that plat yet, um. I don't think they've looked at him yet, but you can check, well, you can stop over there and just give her your legal description. And she should be able to show you what the taxes are on the entirety of a big load before we divide it down.
Okay, and then that's it?
Well, I'll, I will go through it if there's something else, but I won't know anything till after the meeting today.
Okay.
If there's, if there's anything else missing.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Let's see here. Um, this is Black Hills Properties Auburn Acres, so you guys did approve the preliminary plat, so this is gonna be the, kind of a first final, which is why I have it coming forward to you guys. Um. You can see acres, why does this is coming in, so it's kind of right on the corner, a portion of it is right on the corner of Black Forest Road and Rutherford Road, there's a lot right there. Um, and we were waiting originally, they did apply for this quite a while ago, and that's what. Um, and we were waiting originally, they did apply for this quite a while ago, and that's what started the whole process of some things that they were missing, and now we're all caught back up, so they're coming back in. So there's a one acre piece here, and then if you go back, this would be kind of the first, the roads are bonded and pretty much cut in now. Um, paving probably won't start till the spring, I would bet, paving wise, I I don't think they've done anything this winter with paving. Um, and you've got two lots back here. This is all planned unit development, so they can have the small lot sizes like this, it does have water, um, and then the sewer treatment in this area.
But on here, it says the fire plan is in process.
Yep.
Completed.
Correct.
Fire until you get everything completed.
Not with this subdivision, you guys have done this with all of them, because remember, this is the one that they're doing the full um, fire plan as part of when they're putting the roads in. They're taking out a lot of those trees that need to come out, so they're doing it in pieces versus doing a total, so then at the end of it, we actually once, once this phase is all done with getting the, everything in, then they will do a final on it at the end. That, and that's what you've done with each of the other phases, because they take out so many trees when they're putting the roads and stuff in.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll move with you, approve the final plat.
My side.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for final plat, further discussion.
Chairman, if I might.
Yes, go ahead.
Um. Is this area, aren't they also putting hydrants in in this part, or am I mistaken?
Nope, they are, this is all gonna be tied into the water system, just like, just like regular, yes.
Right, so addressed to address part of Commissioner Sleep's question, part of their fire plan involves when they finally get the fire hydrants put in, so it's gonna be ongoing until the project is really further along in the process.
Yeah, because they can't charge those fire hydrants till you have enough homes hooked up to them to make it, you know, work, right?
Right, right, so this is, I hate to say it's a moving target, it's not, but the fire plan can't be completed until the process is moved along far enough for all the elements to fall into place.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is there a bond for the fire plan?
Yeah.
There's.
Yep, it's included in the bond, um, we have, so how, I guess for Eric, for you, how it works with this one is once a year, they'll come in, and so I think it was two months ago, you guys approved twenty-twenty-three's bond, because we were moving into the next phase. And so they'll do that once a year, they'll give you an overall, this is the area we're gonna be working in, and then they'll lay out the bonding for everything that needs to be done, and they'll put the bond in place for the upcoming year. And so we've been doing, it's usually, oh, this one was a little early, normally it's not due till May, but they knew where they were at going into the next year already, so they were a little bit ahead, so we moved it, so I'd say anywhere between January and March, we usually see the new bond for the following year.
Okay.
And it just happened, I think you guys did it in November for this year. Right? So it was just a little earlier than normal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Well, hopefully, this is Duffy's last trip here.
Hopefully.
Okay, next item, Duffe Croft and Stacy Sanders.
All right, so I'll, I'll speak a little louder for you Duffy, okay? I'm trying.
Thank you, Arnie.
Okay, so Duffy is here, um, this is a preliminary and a final plat for her property that she owns, it's at, off of Highway three eighty-five, um, and it's on Archery, yeah, Archery Road, I could, I almost said lane, that's not right, Archery Road, um, it's at the very end of Archery Road, and that road is a county maintained secondary road, um, it goes all the way down to the driveway. And so with this, um, Duffy would like to keep the majority of the ranch in her own name, it's thirty-three acres, lot four will remain with her and all of her homes and structures. Um, Stacy Sanders owns the existing lot two, and when Duffy started this process, um, they found that the existing fence line, which Stacy always thought was her property line, did not match the fence line. And so as part of it, they came together to redo the lot so that it matches the, where the fence actually sits. So that's why you see a change in lot two, it just kinda changes, it's, it really just matches the fence line now. And then the new lot will be lot three. Um, we did make sure that the designated flood zone A does show on there, so for any future, when someone comes in, they know kinda where they have to stay out of for the floodplain wise. Um, and there is access all the way there, because Archery Road is a secondary, but just to be safe, they also designated it on here, all the way down to Stacy's driveway as an easement, just in case there was ever a problem later on, you know, with Duffy wanted to make sure that that easement never kinda went away across the lot, so it it kinda cleaned up a lot of little different things there. Um, preliminary and final plat, it was recommended approval. Fire plan wise, it was determined that she could, um, it really is pretty much an open pasture, lot four is the whole, it it's an H E S mineral ser, or H E S homestead entry survey log. And then if lot three, when they do build, they may have to do some work, but it'll kinda depend on where they build. Some of the areas, they won't have to do anything, if they get up into the trees, then we'll have to deal with that at that time. And that's how the fire plan was written.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, in keeping with, uh, Ruth liking, Ruth likes us to segregate preliminary and final, I get in trouble all the time with planning and zoning for combining them, but out of respect.
I think Bruce said, no, you're fine.
Is he okay with it? Okay. So if you choose.
As long as we don't have any issue with it, one or the other, I think.
Do both of them today, I guess that's okay.
Yeah.
Together. I move with you, approve the preliminary and final. Okay. I'll second it, further discussion.
I've got a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Do like, I mean, I realize this is an existing lot of record, it's making the the lot slightly larger, which is good. Um, am I missing contours someplace?
Um, I think we actually have a second page, Brandon, they did a separate contour page because it got so busy. Um, and maybe I.
On the drive, it's a little difficult, because I'm I'm trying, there's several pages, and I I just didn't see that one. I just wanted to make sure that was on there, too, got struck with some things. Um, that all looks good, I don't know, are we missing access to that lot? On the plat, or is it on a different?
Is. Um, the access is Archery Road, and it goes, it's a county maintained secondary road all the way from Highway three eighty-five.
Yep, I see it now on there, so, I apologize, like, it's just flat, it's kinda, and I I'll say a mess, but only because it's so large, so it makes sense. It's hard to scroll back and forth, um, on there, but that was, it it, I I, the rest, but I think I'm good with, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion, hearing or seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
Brandon, just wanna make sure you voted in favor, correct?
We did. His eye was right there.
It's right at the end, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
All right, Duffy, you're done, it got approved. Um, the all, the next step then though, so I can record it, would be you and Stacy, both of you need to sign the plat, which I don't know for sure if we did that already. Okay, perfect. Well, you guys have to get your taxes and stuff paid, so, perfect, so it's a hundred and twenty days is how long it's good for, so as long as I record it within a hundred and twenty days.
I put covenants on this, as you know.
Yep.
And a lot of, in the last year, they're finally working on it.
Okay.
So. We got a few days there.
Yep, you're fine, you, how about this, you tell me when you're ready to record it, but you just have to do it within that hundred and twenty days. Okay. Thanks, Duffy.
Okay.
All right.
I move down the last item.
Oh, that's right.
On the nine. Uh, ordinance discussion related to guest homes.
Stacy has to pay the taxes on her place.
She will, yep, she'll have to, correct, yep. Okay.
Okay, we, planning and zoning wants, would like the board to have a discussion on, uh, the ordinances related to guest homes and temporary second residences. Uh, this has been a tough one that we've resisted for many, many years, so what's your thoughts, gentlemen? Amber, do you?
I can give a little bit of background, so.
Do that.
Um, we've had a number of planning and zoning meetings where we've been discussing ordinance revisions and different things, and it keeps kinda coming back to, um, a couple, two areas, one, guest houses in general, and we'll kinda tie the discussion in on all of the vacation rentals, because that, it kind of, it, there's a definition of each, but I think, um, sometimes people get the two sort of confused. And then you have the other piece, which is where we allow temporary second residences specifically by conditional use permit, um, and those are, you know, where they come before you guys, and you make that decision of whether or not we're gonna allow it.
Hired hand.
Hired hand or medical, um. And it has to meet one of those things, and then you guys make that determination. Now, that's always been an issue, because it works fine, but most of the time, once there's a mobile home there, it's very difficult for the county commission to make that go away. Um, we have, we have had some situations that we've had to deal with that, and we've worked through it, but that's kind of, it's never ending, it's always there. I'd rather see it not happen that way, but it is what it is, we deal with it when we have to. And then we have the guest house piece. Guest houses are permitted on anything over three acres or more, so you, if you're less than three acres, you can't even request a guest house, we don't allow it. But if you're three acres or more, and you can meet the certain specifications of the guest house, we allow a secondary structure on any lot, ag, park forest, rural residential, suburban resident, it doesn't matter the zoning. Um, but we're, people are getting creative, we'll say, they're getting creative. Um, so it's becoming an issue, so I basically kinda put my foot down that I don't care if it's a pole building, if it's a cabin, if, I don't care what you call it, if you have a secondary livable structure, whatever it might be, we consider it a guest house. And so then they have to meet the guest house ordinance, which is like a thousand square feet is the biggest it can be, um, and that's kinda where we're at right now.
Hundred eighty day occupancy.
Yep, a hundred and eighty day occupancy is all that's allowed, it's really difficult to manage, because I guarantee they're doing it for more than that, but it is what it is, so. Um, I think that's kinda where it's gone back and forth, and then we have this vacation rental piece, which is a whole nother thing. Um, basically, as I ask every year, and I've been told by the county commission, is we're not gonna regulate vacation rentals. If we are going to do that, or if that is a change in what this commission wants to see, that is not something we can fix overnight, it is very lengthy, and it is very difficult to maintain. Um, a lot of entities are trying to, is it doable? Yes. Is it something that I think this commission is prepared for? I don't know, that's your guys' call. But that's, that's kinda, it's separate, we wanna keep those separate, because guest houses have alleviated, you know, a lot of people wanna have a space for their grandkids come home in the summertime, they want kind of that separate space, they want their mother-in-law to be able to come and have a place or whatever, so there, it's kinda two distinct things. Um, at first, the guest house, I know it's cumbersome and people may not like it, but it seems to be working. It's just, we have a lot of them, so I need to make sure that we're still on the same page, that it's okay to be continuing to issue those, because that's kinda where we're at. Um, and then the vacation rentals is a totally different discussion, so I did, I think that's kind of the background of it, and that's where the commission, or Planning and Zoning Commission would like to make sure whatever place they're spending time on trying to make edits, it is consistent with what this board still wants to see. Because they don't wanna go down the rabbit hole one way or another, if it, if you're okay with it as it is, we're not gonna touch it. If you want us to work on it, we will, but I think that's kinda where they're at. I can.
Brandon, would you like to weigh in on this?
Sure, I don't know exactly where we're, where we're going or what the thoughts are. I think we'd had a discussion, have the planning and zoning board kinda have a, have a talk, and see if there's problems or if it's going the right way. Um, I suspect that part of the creative issues that Amber's seen is what we'd seen years ago, where people are doing this living area uh, above a structure before we had the actual guest houses, and whether they try to rent those out as a VRBO, or semi on on short-term things, or they move into that and then rent their own house out, I think it's important to keep in the, in the ordinance, at least uh, under the current paradigm, that, that the, the, the addition, the, well, the mother-in-law house, or the, the, whatever you wanna call that additional living space, um, is not intended to, to allow for a rental. Um, now unless, again, just like she said, unless the, 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 the majority of the board decides that that's just fine, um, which is a different discussion, but I think, I think clarification in all of these is that, that, that other residence, whether it be the CUP second residence, or, uh, this, you know, the guest house, that those are not intended to be income-producing properties for the person that's building, that it's intended to be convenience for family or friends. Um, and of course, you can't regulate every one of those, we basically have to regulate it by complaint at this time. So, uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that there's a problem. Um, I don't know that there is not a problem, I I guess, like, I'm just, well, I think I brought it up to, you know, maybe we should look at it, and I think the thing was, is to see what, what Planning and Zoning Office and the Planning and Zoning Board uh, thinks, is it a problem, is it not a problem, things are going all right so far, let's wait, wait a year, wait two years, or or whatever, and review it again. But that's, I I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem either way. Um, and I don't have a problem if we decide that, yeah, you can use those as income properties, uh, I I'd need to look at that on a personal level and see if that makes sense to me or not, but I think it's, uh, much like our variance request, I think it's, uh, it's important to look at every year, just to at least question it, is it a problem, or is it, is it, is it all right? And that's, I guess that's where I am, is I don't, I don't know that I have an opinion either way, I, my concern is more of how, how the office is handling it, and and what their concerns are, if any.
Okay, Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Amber, is it true, my take is that planning and zoning didn't have any strong take that there was a need to to do anything different, but they just wanted, like you said, to know if she focused any attention on there, and if there was any guidance from the commission, but I think my takeaway was, is that they didn't see anything pressing?
I, I would agree, I think the only thing, one, mainly it was just has the feel changed here, if not, we probably aren't gonna make any changes to the guest house ordinance, is kinda what I had gathered, and we probably won't really touch the temporary second residence, you know, that whole situation. But we wanted to make sure that you didn't want us to delve into vacation rentals, because that is a very different and distinct item. Um, but, you know, it's always, it always comes up, even planning and zoning talked about, should we do something with vacation rentals, or should we not, but that's a totally different venue that I feel like is probably a a separate and distinct discussion. Um, and if you want me to spend time on that, I need to know that, but if the feel of the commission has not changed, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna waste my time on it, I guess, because we have a lot going on that I don't necessarily need to take on more, and I think that's kinda how planning and zoning was too, is they didn't wanna spend the time on it to create this entire ordinance, because the ordinance is an option, we can do that. But is it worth it, because I don't feel like we're at a point yet that the commission or planning and zoning is ready to start regulating it, I guess, is probably the best way to say it.
Jennings, but I apologize, I don't, I'm not familiar with the ordinance, I didn't know what we're doing that today, um, but. So I guess my question is, if you do a guest house, even though it's less than a thousand square feet, does that affect how it is zoned, or does that affect the density of the zoning?
No, it does not, because we're permitting it as it is.
Because it's just.
They have to meet the requirements, and they have to put a deed restriction, so we make sure before the certificate of occupancy is issued for that structure, they have to have a deed restriction in place. So for the future, anybody that buys that lot, they know that they cannot rent that out as a secondary residence, and that's not what it's for. Um, so that's how we do it, it is a guest house only for whoever is in that primary structure.
So when you know what the mother-in-law sleeping in the house. Yeah, I understand that, so I I'm always skeptical, or maybe even opposed, to ordinances that are difficult to enforce. And I'm assuming this is a very difficult ordinance to enforce.
So we can either, what, what it basically comes down to, and this was the caveat years ago when this started, it's been five, six, seven years ago now, um, was that they were, we were having people do it all the time, they were just, I'll get a pick, I'll get a building permit for a pole building, and then we'd go out and do a final inspection, and there's an entire apartment, and so. What do you do with that? That's not what they permitted it for, but are you gonna make them tear that structure down? Probably not, the commission's not going to go and say, you just spent ninety thousand dollars on a pole building, you gotta tear it down now because it's not correct, so instead, we said, well, people are doing this. You got to tear it down now because it's not correct. So instead we said, well, people are doing this. How can we make sure, one, it's being used properly and two, it meets code requirements? You know, is it safe for a person to be in that building? And that was the workaround. So that's why the ordinance took effect. So I will tell you, it will happen. Whether we permit it or not.
But we also don't now have the staff in Amber's office to. Do the maintenance, if that's what you want to call it. I'm trying to keep up.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna, like, once it's permitted and they've done the deed restriction. I don't touch it again unless we get a complaint. And we have, there's been scenarios that people have said. They're doing a nightly rental. And I can go, if I can go find it on VRBO, I'm going to write them up and it's going to come before this board for a violation. So we can do it. It has happened. I guess.
Bruce. I think it is the vacation rentals that probably is maybe the, the bigger enforcement issue. You probably would really want to know what you're getting into with that in terms of. Right, the regulation and, and who's going to do what? And so, yeah.
And I, I think the few times, the people that are doing the, like actually going through the deed restriction, because deed restrictions are something people don't want on their land. They're pretty, so if they go through that process to put a deed restriction on, I think I've only had a couple. That have blatantly gone against it over a five-year term. Cause most of those guys are like, I have a deed restriction on this. I don't want to screw it up. Because if I go to sell this. There's a restriction and it's on all the title paperwork. It's on everything. So I don't, those, I don't really see as much as an issue as just straight up vacation rentals. Myself, like I've had a few, but usually I just have to say, hey, remember you did this restriction and it says you can't rent it. Oh yeah, I was just trying to do it to make a couple of extra hundred bucks this month. Well, you can't do it. And then I don't see it again.
I was going to say the temporary second residence has always been a problem. They always end up being permanent residents there. The holder there, so. I don't know how you get around that.
Well, and that's, I mean, personally for me. The, the secondary structures through the thousand square feet is way easier to deal with. Than you guys allowing them to put a whole nother mobile home. Way easier.
The temptation when you allow them to put another mobile home on, for example, is they probably have a different septic system. They've got utilities. They've, they've got another building there, right? And, and you know, upfront, they're, they have the best of intentions, but going forward, it's going to be sort of like, well, now I've got to remove this perfectly good. Mobile home and I invested all this money in this infrastructure to support that. That's difficult, right? And then what, what we do here sometimes is these are for the not so mobile homes that aren't as nice. If they want to just decommission them and turn them into storage sheds. And it might be perfectly acceptable to do that, but then, you know, that's what they, that's what they want to do with it. They don't want to bury the expensive moving.
And, and I'm going to be the bad person because the only place I have temporary second residences are ag ground. It's, it's the only place I deal with them and they are usually the biggest pain in the butt. Because. Sorry. But they, the, the biggest problem is, is they want their kids to live next door. They want that. So you're permitting them. But the ones that I see the issues with are mom and dad passed away. Kids own the land. Now they subdivide it, but they still want their five acres. But they want to keep their three mobile homes. Well, the. The whole purpose was you had 300 acres to alleviate your three and one forty. But as soon as those go away, we're still dealing with three houses on a five acre piece of property. So over time, we've been able to fix a few. But I mean, we deal with it, what, once a year or so, we get a problem.
I'm reminded, so in the past, we used to do these affidavit, affidavit. And it got difficult to track them. They weren't getting recorded. And then there's this sort of question of. Are you giving sort of a de facto change of zoning without going through the process? And so we, we got rid of all that. What's interesting though is, is that I was back in Sioux Falls recently and I, I like to watch the. Minneapolis County Commission and all that kind of stuff. And, and they have a process, I think, where they do sort of affidavits. And so I would be open to figuring out what their process is and re-looking at that. And to see if maybe. You could read off that and it would be beneficial this time, right? There, all these other updating questions could be satisfied. So I'm just reminded of that now.
Yeah, what they do, so right now we have a bunch of CUPs, which are, you know, that's a whole process in itself and it's kind of okay to keep track of and. Whatever else, but some of the other entities and mostly East River. They, they allow as an allowed use on ag, you can have up to so many family members or, or whatever they have it specifically listed. They allow it, but you have to meet certain things and you have to do a deed restriction. So kind of like we're doing with the guest houses, it's an actual deed restriction, which was a problem before. Is I would just have an affidavit and we'd find them randomly. Like I have a whole book right now that were never recorded. That I have to remember, oh yeah, the Baker family or this. I, I can go back and tell you. I mean, I'll, I'll pick on the Mo family out in St. Anj. She did a number of them. But I have a book that has a signed document. But it was never recorded. Well, how do I enforce that? Now, later on, and I think Brandon, you can probably speak to this a little bit, later on, some of those started getting recorded. But we have a bunch of them that we just found in random building permits as we were scanning. And we, we pulled those out and we put them all in one book. So that we can cut a tree taco. But I think that's the difference with East River is they actually record them. They make sure that they're recorded against the deed.
And, and I think, I don't know that we ever had a formal process, as I recall, in the ordinance that allowed for these. Sort of swaps going on. So we, we want to make sure that we have a, that it's authorized pursuant to our ordinance. And we understand the methodology and it addresses our earlier concerns, right? That's something we can look at, you know?
That's what I was thinking is, is with mobile home deal is, is put a deed restriction enough to make sure that they have 48 acres set aside for each.
And that was kind of what the affidavit sort of used to be. It just, that's not how it works anymore, but. I'm not again, that would be easier for me and have a deed restriction than it would be to do these conditional use permits.
So, sorry, can I ask a question here? So with the deed restriction, when you say you set aside 40 acres. That means that they can leave that mobile home if, because you've put that deed restriction.
There'd be a no build on that other 40 because it sits on this 40.
But they could, right. So you couldn't build here, but they will be allowed to leave that mobile home. So we wouldn't have these issues going forward.
Correct. It wouldn't be necessarily a CUP. Gotcha. Okay. So what I'm kind of hearing. Brandon, do you have anything? I'm sorry. I see that you were open.
I, I was just going to go, we used to have, there was a book that had building right affidavits in it. That was kind of, I don't remember where it went. Essentially what you do is sometimes it was documented on a plaque, sometimes it was documented on a, it was a separate agreement that wasn't always. It didn't always show up in title work because it may or may not have been filed. But it says, yes, basically the benefit, the building right from this property has been giving up, has been given up. To secure building right on an adjacent. Piece of property because it already had a building on it. So you could put two on that one and none on the adjoining one. And yeah, I don't, I don't know. It may be time to even see if we even need to do that anymore. I, you know, I, there are still some special circumstance, usually medical. The ranch hand thing is kind of fallen by the wayside. But, you know, again, just a thing to, to review and see. You, how, how it's, how it affects your office and, and maybe it's just a better, a better record keeping scheme would be the way to do it and to keep it in place. I, I'm not sure.
So what I'm hearing, I guess, and you can, I can relate this back to planning and zoning next week, is. Maybe we're okay with. The guest house stuff going as it is, keep that deed restriction in place. Possibly look at, instead of doing conditional use permits on these temporary second residences. Possibly look at changing the ordinance to be more of an affidavit slash deed restriction sort of thing. Maybe? Is that kind of what I'm hearing? And then as for vacation rentals, are you comfortable with me not going down that or do you want us to look at it? If we do that, I would say it'll be a standalone ordinance. It won't be as part of what we're doing now. But it's going to be a big undertaking and it is going to be a nightmare for us to keep.
So what would we actually be regulating on a vacation?
Well, I, I mean, there's a number of different examples. I've, I have some. Pennington County does currently regulate, but the only thing they regulate is septic system usage. And, but they have a staff member that goes and checks septic systems and does inspections. We don't have that. So that's a piece that we'd have to deal with. They require them, I don't know, it's probably been eight or nine years ago now. Pennington County requires a, they have to pay a fee, registration, registration fee every year. That says, this is what we're operating it under and they pay a fee to the county. And then they go do an inspection on the septic to make sure everything's up and working on it. There's no issues with it. And then they check the bedrooms, you know? Does it have smoke alarms? Does it have, does it meet code requirements for like? Bedroom windows, you know, all of they, they kind of have a basic. And they do that, I don't think they do that every year. I think they did it at, when they first opted to register. And then they ended up doing something to the effect of they gave notice to the county as a whole. You have 90 days to register your vacation rental. If you do not register, you are not grandfathered, period. Is that what the city lead did? I don't know what the city lead did, but it's similar. It was a, like they gave a time period. And then after that date was over, that was when that registration started every year. Now you have, I looked in Vail, Colorado and some of the other ones, because you know, that's a comparison to look at. They have an entire department. That's all they deal with is vacation rentals and how to regulate them. I mean, they literally have two employees, but that's what they do every day, all day long.
I think you could write them, you have to be careful about if you're trying to regulate unrelated persons and those kinds of things. And so like in the middle of the night, someone might know that you have an ordinance regulating vacation rentals. They may be trying to call the sheriff's office or calling somebody saying, you need to come and shut this down. At midnight is their partying and we want this closed down. And I mean, I don't know how often that would happen, but that's one of those things that you'd have to really be careful with, right?
Yeah, a lot of those counties have like a noise ordinance and different things that go into the sheriff's office size. And it's, it's all encompassing. It's not just my department because. It, it can get really sticky.
So yeah, if you really want to know, we're going to eyes wide open.
So is the county, would the county be held liable for. Safety violation?
No. Only, only unless that the county, there's something called the public duty doctrine, I think it's called. And the county would only incur liability is if we made a, a obligated ourselves, gave a duty to a person above and beyond that, which we're offering to the public in general. And so you would never do that. So if I said, you know, Eric, I owe you a duty that I don't owe anybody else, then potentially yes, but we don't do that. That's, that's the same concept as building inspection. Why we don't have any liability for building inspection because we're not. It's not between you and the county, it's the county in general, the public at large.
Richard, do you have anything further?
No.
So you're comfortable with me not dealing with vacation rentals is what I'm hearing right now?
I think that's a can of worms.
Okay. I just want, I ask every year and I just want to know how to go forward with it. So I think that'll, don't you think that'll alleviate planning and zoning's questions?
Okay, we're finished with your business.
Yep.
Brandon, would you mind if I?
You did, you can wait till.
Okay. Then.
Wait six or years. The city of Spearfish is here.
Alexandra, let's, let's do your item next.
Mr. Chairman, you should have in your, in your packets, a copy of a PowerPoint presentation.
Do you want me to pull that up on camera?
Alexandra is our team court director.
Bruce, where is it?
Thanks, John.
Thanks guys for having me here today. So the reason I'm here today is that we were approached by the state back in August. The state saw that there was a potential need for more diversion programming in the Northern Hills area. And they have a, someone who works with the state, who their entire job is working on juvenile diversion. And they saw that with the number of petitions that are being filed between Lawrence, Need and Youth Counties. The need for bringing in additional diversion options to the area. So they started this conversation and what it comes down to is that the state has money for something called. JDAI, Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative and Diversion Programming. So the best way I can explain what that means for us. Is you have your teen court, what I do, which is for your lowest level youth offenders. And then our next option is probation. So you have this entire group of youth that are kind of in that in-between space of. They're not really appropriate for teen court because that is for your lowest level misdemeanor offenders. And then you have this huge gap where you get to your probation level offenders. So they have money for the. NCDC Foundation to provide programming to different areas in the state. There are already several diversion JDAI sites throughout South Dakota. And we are just the most recent one that they're looking at, but because of our size, they would like to create. A collaborative initiative between Lawrence, Need and Youth Counties. So what this would do is create a diversion option. For youth in the area who are again, more than teen court, but are not quite to the point of probation. It would be a more intensive alternative to teen court, which would involve more direct supervision. For youth going through the program. And then there's also an option for a JDAI alternative, which that would be. For youth that are on conditional release. So if you, in our. Packets here, I believe it's going to be the second to last page for you guys. You can see that for juvenile petitions that were filed in Lawrence, Need and Youth County. In 2021, there were 278 petitions that were filed. In the same timeframe, as far as youth who were diverted through a program such as teen court or some other alternative option. That total is about 140, so about 50% between all three counties are being diverted. Lawrence County tends to be a little bit. Higher on the diversions than others. Thank you guys for that. Because they come through me. But this just kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. So you're looking at a total of, you know, 278 total petitions that were filed. Those are kids that were not diverted and then about 140 that were diverted. So what we're looking to do is reduce the number of petitions overall. And part of that is one, by adding that diversion alternative. To kind of give you guys an idea, so you can care well, what's the difference between this and teen court. Teen court is youth-driven. You know, they are given their sentence by their peers. In the case of diversion, they would be given a constructive sentence by the diversion coordinator. And on top of that, instead of doing check-ins with. The coordinator on a two-week basis, like our teen court kids do, they would be doing a check-in with their. Coordinator on a weekly basis. And diversion goes for, by statute for a period of 120 days as opposed to the 90 days that we currently have. Through teen court. And, and as I've already mentioned, it's overall going to be more intense in nature, but it's going to also have the same ultimate goal of trying to keep. Youth out of the formal criminal justice system and give them that opportunity to change that behavior. So that's what we're trying to reduce by adding in a different alternative. That's going to be again, for those higher level offenders. Then we also have our JDAI side of it, which is going to be for your. Youth who, when law enforcement has contact with a youth. And if it is for a higher level offense such as a felony or an assault. They are going to contact the Juvenile Services Center in Rapid City. And they're going to complete what we call a RISE. Which is going to help to determine whether or not that youth qualifies. For incarceration, either through the Juvenile Services Center or through a RISE, which is their alternative to that. We're not looking at trying to keep the kids out of the Juvenile Services Center. But there are times where you have those kids who. Who would normally end up in a RISE, who maybe don't need to be placed in a RISE, but they do need that accountability of having the mandatory 48-hour hearing. That comes with that placement in a RISE. So with that being completed, this gives us the option of allowing. So with that, um, being completed, this gives us the option of allowing that youth, assuming that it's a safe environment to do so, for that youth to be able to stay in the home, but still have that accountability of the forty-eight hour hearing. It also, um, gives the youth the accountability aspect of them having to, um, meet on a regular basis with their JDAI coordinator until their case is adjudicated and they are ultimately sent on to probation or something. So it's informal probation until they are adjudicated. The nice thing on the county side of it is that by not sending some of these kids to a R A I, that's saving the county three hundred dollars per day per kid. Um, and if you look at some of the numbers, um, I mean, it's not uncommon for someone to end up in a R A I for two weeks. You know, so I mean, you're talking about potentially saving thousands of dollars just on a single youth. Um, plus you're also, um, helping to, um, help them with, you know, uh, a faster adjudication process. So if we look at this page here, um, you will see that where we have our R A I indicated decisions, which you'll see, um, you've got secure is going to be your, uh, J S C kids. Alternative is going to be your R A I's kids and then release is going to be the kids that they do the R A I on and they say, nope, they, you know, don't qualify. However, you'll see that on the actual decision, a lot of times the R A I is overridden and those kids are placed in an alternative, um, programming. So what this would do is those kids would normally have scored for release, um, but then are placed into that alternative. That's where we're looking at trying to reduce that number. So in theory, you could potentially be, you know, keeping, you know, uh, eighteen kids in theory out of J, um, a R A I. Um, I mean, there's, I, I'm not going to say that that's for sure what you're going to be looking at because it also, it completely depends on what the offense is itself. For instance, if you've got a, you know, a youth who assaults their parent, that's a civil assault domestic violence. Well, we're not going to be saying, oh, hey, little Johnny, let's send you back home where you just beat up mom. You know, that's not, uh, what we're looking at. But when you're looking at, say there is an assault that occurred outside of the home, but they're going to be safer than their own home, it might be a situation like that. And of course, I mean, there's other things beyond that as well too, that could potentially qualify. Um, but we are looking at providing, um, like I said, um, pre-adjudication supervision, um, to those youths, so that informal probation aspect. So why I'm here today is we have been having these conversations between Lawrence County, Meade County and Butte County for the last several months. Um, and we are working on applying for a grant that would allow, um, this programming to be provided to the youth in our Northern Hills area. Um, it's been agreed that based on the five oh one C three status of Lawrence County Teen Court and with the, um, with, uh, our current abilities, that it would make sense for that grant to blow through Lawrence County Teen Court. Um, but of course we'd be providing the service as Northern Hills Area Diversion to, um, both Meade and Butte Counties. Um, the grant I am applying for is going to be for about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And it is going to be for a, a period of three years. After which point, it's going to be up to the counties to decide whether or not they feel that this is a program that is we're continuing or whether it's going to be something that we need to reevaluate and maybe go a different direction. Um, so the reason I'm here today is because we are in the process of doing our M O U, um, to determine who is going to be a willing participant and supportive of the program. And, uh, so I'm here to see if this is something that you guys are going to be supportive of or not. Um, and answer any questions that you may have and uh, see if you guys are potentially interested in being a part of this M O U. It doesn't require anything financially, um, from Lawrence County. Um, and like I said, at the end of our three-year grant period, it'll ultimately be up to, um, Lawrence, Meade and Butte Counties to decide whether or not they feel that it is, um, a program.
Like you've done a lot of hard work on this. I, I definitely, uh, am in support of it. I think it's a, uh, a good bird to go down.
Yeah. Yeah, teen court, it has been helpful.
Oh, very much so.
Okay. I agree. Yeah, anytime we can do some kind of a diversion program to, to help these kids and, uh, change their path early on, that's, that's where I work.
You have something you need us to sign?
Not at the moment. Uh, we just started circulating our draft M O U yesterday. Um, I've given everyone about a week or so to look it over, see if they feel like there's any changes that need to be made. And once that draft M O U has been reviewed, um, then, you know, we'll, uh, send it around for signatures after that point. So far, the only feedback I have gotten is the order of signatures, um, that is on the, the most recent draft. Um, as far as the content, there hasn't been any change to the content itself. Um, other than under the parties section, um, the copy you have doesn't have all of our parties listed. But we currently have, um, parties involved to include the South Dakota Fourth National Circuit, Meade, Lawrence and Butte County State's Attorney's Offices, Meade, Lawrence and Butte County Commissions, Northern Hills School Administration, um, Northern Hills Area Sheriff's Departments, Northern Hills Police Departments, Behavioral Management Systems, Action for the Betterment of the Community, Compass Point, and then Lawrence County Teen Court.
Mr. Chairman. Alex, you're not looking for any kind of a motion today, right? You're kind of giving the commission a preview and then you'll follow up with that agreement at a later point. Is that fair?
Correct.
So you're looking for any opposition or any reason why, why not, you need to come back with any answers for a later date?
Sounds like to me you've got total support. Are you on board, Brendan?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let's just keep running down the list, all right? Um, are your city folks in the territory here?
We have to go back to work, so.
Okay, Michelle will have to come up and continue the Spirit Beach vacation.
They really want to go back.
Well, my next step is Spirit Beach High School, so thank you.
Oh, it's been a while. You know, it's been a while, Richard. Always good to see you. Got to send one on that way, Michelle. Very nice to meet you. And we'll have you pass those down. Do you want me to stall and be, no, just kidding. I usually go ahead. Keep them rolling.
Okay, Michelle, you got your thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds since when?
You took your pass.
Well, I can do it, but, uh, we do have three months to report here though, so I'm going to take some rest between the thirty seconds. Um, meetings, we always just list them there because obviously the public gets to see some of what we're doing with, with the time and the position. Uh, but the programming in our events is really what I like to speak about. Four H just continues to rock and roll. Our enrollment is growing still for seven years straight. Character All-Stars, you'll see pictures of them on the back. Uh, we continue with Kate Heine and Dago going into West Elementary to speak on character and leadership. I did bring some, uh, middle schoolers in as well to speak, so that went over very well. Teen Mental Health First Aid, we did complete our first session back in November. I actually start again today at Spirit Beach High School for another round of fifty-plus students, certifying them with the skills that are so helpful to reach out to their peers in the event that, um, someone might have a challenger crisis with mental health, that they connect to another adult. Um, Junior Leaders, as you can see, they've been very active for the last few months. Just Sunday, we had, you'll see the picture on the, the last page there. The Junior Leaders hosted a stained glass workshop where they were able to invite a lot of other youth. They're not all listed there, many left a little bit early. Uh, but they invited, they helped to pay for the project, uh, just to get other teenagers involved potentially in hearing about Junior Leaders and then of course they got to complete a project that we hope to see at our county fair this summer. Our Ethics Trapping Course at the bottom there. Boy, oh boy, with December's weather, it's been a little bit tough. But they'll keep going with our trapping season as long as they can. Uh, workshop is listed there. I was able to be a part of New Old Youth Leadership Day again. Got to be a part of, um, all grades, middle school, high school, hot on respect there and ongoing commitment of leadership. Four H Day at the Capitol was last Wednesday. We got to see Randy there. That was kind of a neat opportunity. Um, kind of the whole east. I shouldn't say the whole, but so many, high percentages were not able to make it to that Capitol Day, but uh, we trudged very slowly in a twelve-passenger van through the weather. I don't think I'll be taking a twelve-passenger van anymore FYI, in the winter, so. Just saying. Professional development, I, I just keep, I keep it on with some of those professional development things. But the position in and of itself daily develops my professional capacity. Uh, one thing just to be aware of within Lawrence County Mission is I've been working, I've been working monthly with Butte County in particular on some potential remodel and expansion of our office. Um, and that involves the reality that our office space, where we do host some meetings as well as workshops, um, can get really confined. We're not complaining. We absolutely love the place that we're at. Storage is amazing. But we've brought in someone from Butte County who does the maintenance to potentially knock down a wall, which just expands our capacity to add some kitchen appliances, potentially do some special foods and almost doubles our capacity to meet and have workshops in that space. Love going into community venues, um, we work with chambers, things like that. We work with local purchase or we're able to host our events free of charge in many places, but sometimes having them in-house really helps. So, just to be aware. I'm writing grants for some of that work, um, writing grants for continued access opportunities for workshops, things of that nature and as well as, Richard, I believe you were there at the fair board. Uh, we are continually needing to upgrade and address some safety concerns at our county fairgrounds. So I have written grants in that for John. There, that's what I do, Eric. I speak really fast.
Your office is in Butte County, mind right, building next to the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yep, so we really, we have all our offices on the main floor, storage is in the basement, the V S O is with us. Now just got an upgrade or an up, increase of his hours. He's with us in one block.
That the old John call, sir? No, there's, uh, it's the other direction from the place.
Yeah, you got that, the courthouse.
Any further, any questions for Michelle? Keep up the good work and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Always appreciate your support.
All right, Kyle, vacation's over, buddy.
Our new floodplain administrator with us too, he'll be doing all the future stuff, Bob Liling. He is our new time big, so.
Okay.
Happy to have him on the board, but since I'm so familiar with it, I'll just be presenting real quick to you and get you guys an update on this, so. Like, you're in the loop before this, but new floodplain comes official.
They're, they're getting the maps.
Sounds like a bunch of rats back there. I'll give them a couple seconds.
Do you guys just want to look at the little copies?
Yes. Yeah, it's probably easiest.
There's five of one and there's one, only four of. So do you want the full packet so that we can have?
Sure, yeah, I only asked for two today, but.
Well, we have five pages, different pages.
Yeah, that's right.
But the last map, we didn't have.
We can just utilize.
So we'll just, I'll give you this whole set though to go down. Okay, go ahead and start. I'll roll this up and.
Okay, well, um, this has been a, a long process here, but we're finally at the, the very end of this, but uh, I'll just give you a quick update on everything where we're at and how we're going to finish things up. Just quick background for those of you that weren't familiar with this, I think most of you are. Uh, the county and the city joined together and wanted to get this L O M A done. Um, quite a, quite a few years ago, actually September two thousand eighteen, reached a higher A E two S, uh, to complete the Spirit Beach Remapping Project. Uh, the project scope involved the analysis, mapping of the creek and floodplain impacts on the community including with the FEMA issuance of the letter of mapping. The area of study extends from just south of the Winterville Bridge along Spirit Beach, uh, Canyon Road and all the way up to the north side. I ninety is where we tie in the agency floodplain. So why did we decide to do this study? Uh, accuracy is a big thing. The effective existing floodplain map uh, has some inaccuracies in it, um, so we wanted to get those cleared up. We wanted to utilize better mapping methods that, uh, we have available nowadays versus when the effective map was done. And we wa- also wanted to utilize some additional creek gauge station data to more accurately reflect the estimated creek flows. Uh, for example, the current effective flows for a hundred-year floodplain are around seventy-two hundred C F S. Um, with thirty additional years of these gauge station data, we are able to see that a hundred-year event is more closer to about forty-eight hundred C F S. So quite substantial. So where, where are we at in the approval process? We are done with the review process for FEMA. They approved and issued the L O M A, uh, uh, November third, twenty twenty-two. And they, uh, placed the floodplain insurance study and floodplain insurance rate maps online right now. It does have an issue date of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, so it's not affected yet. But it is online for everybody to view. We are currently in the, you know, public comment period right now. And we obviously are, uh, want to take that opportunity to provide, uh, public informational meetings to our communities. You know, how many cities, there's going to be a lot of residents that are affected, both positively and negatively, negatively on this. So, uh, we'll all be hosting, uh, along with A E two S and FEMA representatives will fly out. We have two meetings set up and encourage you to come if you're, you're interested. It's basically going to be kind of over one more day, but a little more in-depth. Uh, the meetings will be held on February thirteenth from five to seven P M. Um, and then from February, on February fourteenth from one to three P M. Uh, if the commissioners or council members get questions from the public in the meantime, uh, about this L O M A, uh, feel free to just direct them towards Bob and I or Amber. Um, and I, let's try to encourage everybody to come to the meeting. You know, we'll have a general scope, um, general information presentation at the beginning and then we will have three or four tables where we'll sit down with, um, individuals and most of them are going to want to know how it affects them. Where's my house? How does it affect me? So we'll have different stations, everybody can come to and we'll try to help them as best as possible. So they're prepared for what's coming, good or bad or indifferent. The, yeah, as I said before, the L O M A will become effective on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. That will replace the existing one right now. The other part of this is there's several homes along Spirit Beach Creek that have L O M As, that are map amendments. So for instance, if somebody has a floodplain on their lot and they wanted to get their structure out for cheaper insurance or no insurance on the structure, they were doing elevation certificate for a L O M A or anything like that. So those are recorded right now. Obviously, when you change the floodplain, it may, um, those still may be accurate or they may not, so. Uh, uh, just sent a letter to FEMA asking them to reissue all of them that still pertain. So FEMA is currently looking at each one of those to see, they're seeing which ones can still, are, are still representative of floodplain and which ones are to be, um, renewed.
Yeah, so we'll get a revalidation letter if they allow that. So this isn't a new process. We did this in two thousand twelve. Um, Tanya and I worked through this, but most of the time they get revalidated.
most of the time they get revalidated unless there's a major like foot difference or whatever, but hopefully we'll get revalidation letters on most of those.
Yeah, there are some areas where floodplain will be higher, so they may not be, their house may be in it.
Yeah.
Where I have to get insurance, et cetera, so. Uh, we'll just have to wait and see. So, um, the other thing I will just start looking at the maps now, uh, wanna take you through some of the major changes, just so you have a general understanding what's gonna change here. So that this first map that you see here. The orange and yellow, this is a zone X. It's a point two percent annual chance of flooding, which is a five hundred year event, basically. That is not regulated in the county or the city, um, just regulate up to a hundred year, but this is a very substantial change from the existing floodplains affected one. As you can see, there's a lot of orange and yellow there. Along Evans Lane and west of it. That, what's that, what that's representing is shallow flooding, so there's often kind of, not often times, but when we have heavy events, uh, the flows from the creek do come out of the west bank a lot near Hillsview. And they meander through that area. There's really no defined drainage channels or anything, so that's why you see that. It's very shallow, uh, very minor flooding, but that, that five hundred year zone was not, is not currently there, so. All of that that you're seeing there will be shown in zone next now. Uh, if you want to split to the next one. So these are, these are probably the most beneficial maps we have. These are not the LOMAs. But uh, they're really easy to understand. This, this first two right here, I just kinda cut the the floodplain study in half here, it would seem a little better, but this is a comparison between the effective one that's out there right now and this new revised one. So, for reference, the orange, that will be floodplain that's added to the current floodplain. Blue is remaining, um, it's the same as before, and then green is removed. So just real quickly, I'll jot on some fairly significant differences. Up along Old Highway fourteen, uh, kind of Guadalajara's and west of Evans Lane. That green area there, that will no longer be in the floodplain, so they won't. Uh, they won't be affected. They won't, they don't need to carry floodplain insurance or anything like that. So that's a good plus for them. Let's see, Third Street, Rushmore in Ohio. Further down here, that is some newly added floodplains, so some of these people that weren't in the floodplain are gonna be in there. Uh, as you get south of Hillsview, that's kind of the area I'm looking at there. There's a lot of um, areas to the east and west that are green there, that are gonna be out of floodplain too, so by and large, it's probably a little bit more positive effect through the Ramsdale area in there. Uh, but there are some people that will be coming into the floodplain. Aren't currently in it, so. What does that mean? That means that the lenders, if they have loans and stuff, are gonna be probably calling in and saying, we need floodplain insurance. Those are the things we're gonna explain in, in detail at the.
Those would be the maps. What's that? Those would be the map people.
Yes, those will be the, the people that Bob deal with. Uh, what else? We got substantial removal in the Ramsdale, we should talk about that one. Um, Third to Canyon and Jackson Federal, we've got what is it that was added into there on the second sheet? You can see the orange on the east side of the creek there. Um, but you also see a lot of green here. That, those green areas kind of they're, they're those areas that are higher up. So you can see the flood, the floodplain kind of follows by and large, obviously, the creek, but um, Third Street as well. It kind of acts as a, a conveyance element too for this floodplain. Um, and then, uh, as you get down south, down by Spriffish Canyon Road. You can see how widely inaccurate that floodplain is right now. You have a lot of floodplains getting removed in that Winterville, Spriffish Creek area. And then finally, this last one, so that's floodplain that we just went through, floodplain limits. This one right here is floodway and how it affects floodway. The floodway is where you have much, much more limitations on development. Uh, typically, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to develop anything of flood a floodway. So, as you can see here, by and large, we're probably getting rid of about half of the floodway through town, which is great. Um, that's a good that's a good thing. Most of the, you can see most of it, um. The floodway is primarily in the creek bank, within the creek bank, so that is a high, a very, very big plus on that. And really, that's about all I have to present. Unless everyone wants to add anything.
No, I don't think so. I think just for background, um, because I know Eric hasn't really gone through this process yet. Richard, Bob, were you, I think you were, were you here in two thousand twelve?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we did this process before, um, where we've done map updates. This is nothing new. Tanya and I dealt with very upset people last time. It's just kind of the way it is on the biggest thing that I guess I would clarify to the commission is please don't try to answer their questions. It's probably outside your realm a little bit, and it can get very sticky very quickly.
Refer him to Bob.
Refer him to Bob. Yeah, refer him to Bob.
Yes.
Um, and, and main thing that we found, yeah, what, what we found last time, um, is it's, there's a lot of emotion involved from some of these people. Um, and it is something that is a banking tampered, it's not, just because we're changing these maps. It doesn't really affect how Bob and I do our jobs, because it's, we just follow FEMA policy. But it really does, it's, it's a banking thing. So, um, we have been in touch with a couple of different banks in Spriffish, um, where I think we've got at least two of them that will be in attendance to kind of help for people to understand how it's gonna change their banking side. Because that's not something the county's regulating that is strictly banking. Um, and it has gotten much stricter over the years. It used to be that they'd allow us to say, no, it's not really in based on elevation or whatever. Most of the time, the banks will not accept that anymore. It has to be an actual elevation certificate done by an engineer, which costs money. Um, and the county or the city does not provide that for them, so they have to go and get that if they want to. And that's probably the hardest that we have to deal with, is people are like, you mean, I either have to pay insurance or I have to pay an engineer to say I'm not a, yes, that's what they have to do. Um, so it is gonna be difficult. I will be in attendance both of those days. Um, the banks hopefully will be there. I think we're also, are we gonna do insurance people at all, I think? Or we just?
I sent out, I sent out a letter to all the insurance. State banks.
So, la- last time we had a good number of people show up and kind of help from that side of things. Because it does affect their jobs as well when insurance, you know, are doing underwriting and banks are doing their underwriting for mortgages and but I guess just so you know, it's nothing new. We've, we've been there before.
Yes, uh, this will be a great addition, though that flood was not very accurate and from health and safety perspective.
Yeah.
Um, I think this should last very, very long time. I don't think we need to do this. At least until I retire, hopefully.
That would be good. Yeah, it's, it's a good addition, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will send, I did just about the commissioners, I did share, just I took pictures of these and sent them to Brandon, because he didn't have them. So I did snap them, and then I will scan these in so that the public can see them if they want, right at this point, I mean, it's out there.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't hand anything out, but
Yeah.
Uh, we certainly use them for viewing if they have questions in the meantime.
And we'll have, so the big maps that I had here, those are the real, they're the big version of these. We'll have those at the meeting so people can visually see it. But we don't hand these out to anybody, because what ends up happening is people say, well, this is what it's gonna be, and this is this, and they don't know what it is yet. So we ask kind of wait till after the public meetings to get that information out there. Um, the link was available, so if the general public asks you guys. I did attach to this agenda and it was publicly, they could click on the link to FEMA. They can go view them that way if they want to, because that's the official version.
We do have PDFs of all these maps too, that I just got yesterday, sending to us, so I will forward those on.
Yeah, if you could do that, then I can have those. Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
He's got them. That's your copy.
Thanks, everyone. We'll take a quick little break and then we'll. Begin chat with Ms. Brenda.
Alrighty, I have three different topics. I'm starting with the tax report for twenty one taxes payable in twenty two. We had forty five million, two hundred and forty five thou, two hundred and forty nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty three dollars and fifty cents levied for whole tax collection. That's real property and mobile homes. And of that, we only have forty nine thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars and thirty nine cents left to collect.
Wow.
That's pretty good.
Which is eleven one hundredths of a percent um, left to be collected. Last year, we were at point zero five one hundreds, um, but, um, still, um, very, very amazing.
Yeah.
Of course, you heard from Deb when she was here, talked about the tax fee sale. That helps that tremendously to get those taxes paid and out to all of the taxi entities in the county along with, with ourselves, so, um, I'm just, uh.
It's phenomenal.
Form you of that. Yes, yes, so, very thankful, um, um. I'm gonna kind of just give a little bit of a, um, when we bu- when we budget, the state our state statute requires us to do that five percent on collectible. Obviously, you can tell, so that's, um, you know, I'm, I'm pulling that away, because normally you don't have that collected, so, you know, we can use that. Obviously, that revenue source to either fund the next year's budget or, which will lead me into topic three when I get there. Um, with our unassigned funds. Um, the second topic I have is our bond redemption. Um, as you all know, we have uh, payments due every year, June first and December first, um, along with that administrative fee, which, um, I don't know if you've seen it, when you approved the bills today, it was a two thousand dollar administrative fee to, um, US Bank. Um, so what I'm asking today is to transfer, um, funds from the general fund to the bond redemption to make those payments. Back in January twenty sixth of twenty one and December twenty eighth of twenty one, we assigned funds for this specific project. Um, we just labeled it Public Safety and Services Center project. That way it could be, if we need it for construction, if we need it for bond payment. Um, it's a, kind of leaves, leaves it open so that we have flexibility with that. Um, so I am looking for a motion to use two million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy eight dollars and sixty three cents from the December twenty eighth, twenty one motion of assignment of funds and two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty three dollars and eighty seven cents from the January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one motion. And then also to transfer two million, seven hundred and thirty three dollars and forty two, forty two dollars and fifty cents from general fund to the bond redemption fund to make those payments as they come up in twenty three.
Good job.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
Yeah. I know, it's very confusing, so if you have any questions, please ask.
Brendan mentioned earlier that the funds could be used for bond redemption or construction. By doing this action, is it one of the commissioner's discretion and how the money gets spent? So there was an issue that came up with construction, um, a year from now. Would that money be unavailable for that purpose?
These particular funds would, because I'm transferring them from general fund to the bond redemption fund, but we still have other revenues assigned for this project. Um, I know, I don't know if you recall back in, um, this July of last year, when we had the um, original American Rescue Act funds. Though we made that provision to take, to take the ten million dollar option, and then we were to use those, up to ten million, and then we could use those funds for, um, county general services, which we did. So then the money that we actually had for county general services, we assigned to this, to the actual construction. And, um, the interest that was maintained or obtained from those funds, because we put those in that, if you remember, when I did the auditor's account with the treasurer, the five million. That money was signed specifically to fund the construction. So there are other revenues that are assigned, um, for, for the project as well. This is just using some of those to make our bond payments, which in other makes it so we do not have to opt out at this time. You know, so as long as we can continue to, to use our savings to make those payments, we don't have to use the opt out for, which is what we intended to do from the beginning. That was our main goal, was try to go as long as we could before we had to, to utilize that opt out.
So, this is, unlike those other decisions, this is an irrevocable decision. And so the money will have to be used for that purpose, right?
Yeah.
And, and, um, how many, how many years or what period of time of bond payments will that cover?
Um, this particular funds will go for twenty three, and I have, right now, assigned enough for probably twenty four and some into twenty five, barring no other catastrophes take place in the county in between now.
So, if I may too, and so I think in that, in that period of time, it's anticipated that the destruction will be completed and up and running. And you've, you've heard the sheriff talk about his, uh, uh, prisoner model, right? The business model. And, and so the, the plan is, is that that again will, will generate some additional revenue to again add additional insurance to avoiding ever having to invoke the opt out. Right? So, so that, that's all really good news, I would think, right?
We are, we are in a, in a very, very good, good position. Um, not only, um, you know, frugal, that the corrector department heads who are very, very conscious about, which will be the next topic I talk about, um, about, you know, wasting money just because it, they budgeted for it. If they don't need it, they don't spend it. It gives back turn to the general fund, which like I said, will be my next topic of assigning, um, an additional amount of money for this project.
Okay.
Moving forward, so.
Just one quick question, Mr. Chair, just so I understand the process. Two, the first two of those transfers involve decisions that were already approved by the commission? But that was last year? Is that why we're having to have another motion?
Actually, what happens is, is that the state allows for the county to have up to forty percent of unassigned funds in the. Actually, what happens is, is that the state allows for the county to have up to forty percent of unassigned funds in their budget. And, and by assigning the funds to a specific project, now they become assigned funds. And you can, and so say, for instance, a bridge needed to be repaired tomorrow. I could, you could make a motion to say that we're not going to use this five million dollars for this public safety. We're going to use it to repair that bridge. You make the motion to reassign it to that, transfer it to the road and bridge. So it's basically assigning it to something, but it, you can, it still sits in the general fund. It's just assigned for this project. But if something would come up and you would need to use it for something else, you could make a motion to reassign it to something else and then use it for that.
So we're reassigning.
Yeah. Basically, you're allowing me to use the assigned funds for the Public Safety and Services Center and transfer it to the bond redemption fund.
As I said.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it true, Brenda, that once you assign it, then it's taken out of that forty percent calculation? So it gives you more cap room for this sort of thing? And so it was given a, a preliminary sort of designation, but now what Brenda's asking for is to really earmark that portion of the funds. And so it becomes an unequivocal designation at that point, as opposed to just assigning kind of part.
We really mean it this time.
You do.
You're actually going to use it and you can't, you're going to make, you're going to make your loan payments.
I would hope that we follow autogroup of rooter's recommendation and, and assign the funds to the bond redemption.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion, seeing or hearing none, we moved up to the chair. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Brendan's eye was very soft.
He didn't, he was still on mute. Yeah. And then my last topic is, is the unassigned fund balance from the twenty twenty two budget. Of course, I'm working on my annual report. And when I look at the unassigned fund balance, I take what my cash balance is minus my expenditures, plus my revenues, and what I already have assigned, and then that gives me a percentage. Well, now the year is over and, of course, we're not spending any more money, we're not getting any more revenue, and I have just a, a little over nine hundred thousand dollars that needs to be assigned. And I would recommend, but you can do whatever you want, but I would recommend assigning nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars to the Public Safety and Services Project, like what we've done in the past.
Mr. Chairman? Just to continue the thought, this is revocable at some point. It can be, it can be reassigned some other purpose, right?
That's what.
Yeah, this week.
We just mean this, we don't really.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm getting this down now.
Look, it's very complicated. But I would make that motion also.
Okay. Second.
A motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I've been watching his lips, he's saying aye.
See it. Alrighty, that's, that's all I have. I, I know I spoke a lot this meeting, sorry, I haven't.
We enjoyed it.
I wish it would all be this time. I know I. Can you say that again, Richard?
Well, you're allowed to have forty percent saved. This would have been over.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, which would, which in, this is kind of give you some background, Eric. If, if I go over that forty percent, I get written up, I get a written comment on my audit report. She gets in trouble. I get in trouble, basically. But I mean, well, no, I, I mean, it's a good, it's a good kind of trouble to be in, but I don't, I don't, I don't like to be. She likes to be.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna finish the agenda as far as items from public and items from commissioners. Then we did save some space for additional personnel, which we will do after we finish these last two. So I will take items from the public, it looks pretty bleak out there. So we'll close that item and items from the commissioners. I have a couple, a couple items. Do you gentlemen have anything to offer?
I don't right now, I'm just trying to look to see how the force bill will be made, but I didn't get a chance to find it.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, I was thinking maybe about having a meeting in February.
Okay.
Currently, your meeting is the fourteenth.
So the other one will be the twenty eighth? Am I looking at?
That's probably right, yeah. That'll give you two weeks then.
Yeah.
I think that's originally we had in there.
Okay, I, I think that's a good idea. What do you think, Brenda?
I missed what the question was.
We'd like to add February twenty eighth to our meeting.
I will not be in the room, but I can attend by online.
Or have so, so much material anymore, let's say.
What are your thoughts, Commissioner Jennings?
I'm good with it. I, I would rather have more meetings than, than this much.
Yeah.
Material.
Yeah. This is normal anymore.
Well, if you'd like to make a motion, we have twenty fifth.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight. Twenty eighth, we'll be on February twenty eighth.
I'll say.
General meeting. Okay, motion in a second, further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else?
No, I don't. I was approached by Prairie Hills, who they provide a fantastic service for the whole Northern Hills in getting our elderly population to and from appointments and such, and they're, and they're reasonable. So I've always supported public transit. They had an issue up in Lead where their van that they keep up there keeps, has been vandalized multiple times. And so they approached me to see if there was anything we could do to help with that. The, the city of Lead has a building up there that they may have already surplus or they're gonna surplus. It's a two-stall building on a lot with quite a bit of room around it. And Prairie Hills would like to get their hands on it, but don't have the funding to do so. And the city of Lead can't donate it to them. The city of Lead can donate government to government, and we're in the same boat. So the city was to donate it to us, we could turn around and then turn and give it to them. They also said that if we could figure out something to make this work for them, we could utilize half of the building. They only need half of it to get these vans in, inside to try to keep this vandalism, get it to be. Bruce, do you, do you want to weigh in on this?
At, at chairman's direction, I contacted our wayman, police chief, now the city administrator in Lead. And I understand, maybe it's a little more complicated than what it was at the lead. So I think that the city of Lead is interested in getting, is it two or three new dump trucks?
Two.
Two, and, and leveraging that, this situation to their benefit. So they would say to Prairie Hills Transit, you have a relationship with somebody in the DOT who surpluses dump trucks every year. You help us get a couple of dump trucks, and then possibly we would, they would figure out a way to surplus this, this building or sell this building to Prairie Hills Transit. And I don't think any of that is, is probably going to happen, but I think like.
Prairie Hills has approached the DOT and they are trying to make something work there.
Okay, but I don't know how, I think the rules, our rules are the same. And so you could theoretically, I think, maybe convey it to a economic development outfit. Then I think doesn't perhaps have the same restrictions, and they could somehow do it that way. But you know, that perhaps gets a little complicated and gets kind of, I don't know, maybe harder to explain, but.
But I just wanted to bring it up, just in case you guys got any creative ideas. I, I've always, like I said, I've always supported public transit. I'd like to be able to help them, but our hands are tied as far as the smooth transaction they had in mind.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can too, I think this property, I've heard about this before, before I recognized what it is. I think it's up behind a mile-high trailer court up in there. And, and so I think it sits on an acre of land, but it sounds like it's mostly hillside. And so I know people who are personally interested in trying to acquire this. And so I, the last time I heard, and I don't know if it's true, as the chairman alluded to, that the city was gonna surplus it and try to sell it. I think they were anticipating getting quite a bit of money out of it. And, and I, I know somebody that put in, I think, a forty thousand dollar bid for it. I think that was very good. No, there's somebody else.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I know private people that are looking to have this to store their boat, kind of thing, rather than a camper. And so I don't know if the city went forward and surplused it or not, but you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Anyway, I just wanted to share what, what I had been approached.
Well, Prairie Hills Transit does a good job, but they can be against private enterprise too. And that's always been a question.
Well, and, and Mr. Chairman too, I, I had a thought, and I, I did follow up on it. If they're looking for secure storage, it may not be indoor, but the city of Deadwood has a sort of a dead storage area up kind of behind Gulch's Fund. You wouldn't even know it's there. And so maybe if it's secured storage, that's their objective outside, maybe. They should contact the city of Deadwood and see if maybe they can have stuff there. That might have helped, sure.
We.
We've been allowed to, uh, uh, from different, at different times, house our county vehicles up there in the winter time, so they're not chasing us around to the south down here when we're trying to move snow.
I had something else, but I, I've lost it.
I'm sorry, I probably.
No, no, I, I, I was gonna write it down a while ago and my pen didn't do it.
Well, that's a.
Pens are terrible.
That somebody else had the same problem.
Oh, yeah. CRS. Well.
If I may?
Yes.
So you talked about earlier in your meeting about continuing this personnel matter. And so on Friday, was, Friday was the deadline for applications for the director of equalization position. Remember, it was back in, and I think in December, I think you interviewed your only applicant. There have been no other applicants since then. That, that person is, is still interested in, in, in visiting with you further about that. And so I can go up, she's here, I can go up and get her if, if you're so inclined to want to talk to her. I don't know exactly what she wants to say, but she's still interested in the job.
Do we need to go into the second session then?
I would think that would be appropriate, yes. So it's a one twenty five, two substitute.
So there's no, no new applications?
Zero.
No.
Zero. I, I can't add that.
I mean, Mr. Chairman. You know, these, the gentleman's retired and we can't ask him to stay forever.
He wants to be born. He's retired. He's retired, he doesn't want to be here.
Oh, yeah. So we'll live.
Quite retired.
Listen to that.
Okay.
Take the session?
Yeah.
Second, the motion. Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion? Say aye. We need to do something with.
You gotta do here. I don't know how to do that. You need to mute that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have to call Brenda.
Okay, we've come out of executive session without any decisions.
Twelve fourteen?
Mm hmm. Any further business that needs to come before the board this morning?
So I'm not sure if the motion going off to it, does the motion need to include who we're making the offer to? Is that okay? So I move that we offer Brett, uh.
Rungy?
Rungy, stick it run, Rungy, uh, the director of acclimation position for a salary of seventy two thousand eight hundred plus, uh. Longevity, plus her accumulated longevity.
That's her base.
Yep.
With a, a date of, uh, Friday, which is.
Twenty seventh.
Friday twenty seventh, to let us know by Friday the twenty seven, twenty sixth?
Six month, no six months?
Oh, with the twenty seventh with a six month probation. If, if she just declines the offer, then we would reopen the director position, uh.
The, the third. And it may be not set a closing date?
Risk.
Until filled?
Just open.
So, just so I understand, one twenty seven, three is when she has to respond?
Yes.
I have my closing business.
My close of business, okay.
So we got the base pay plus the longevity totaling about seventy five thousand dollars.
We need to put that out.
Normally I just put the base pay in the minutes, I don't put longevity, that's, you know, that's.
But just so we know, right?
Well, it would be her base bay including longevity.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I can do that.
Or her base bay plus.
Do it, we need to say that. Can we just say when you're.
You don't, because she automatically.
She's gonna get that.
She already automatically gets longevity, so, so just the base pay.
Okay.
Longevity is added on.
Friday at five.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second, do we have further discussions? Seeing none or hearing none, all those with the motion will be I.
Alright.
Opposed, motion can't.
Okay.
Do we have?
Thank you, thank you, Brandon.
Do we have any further business to come before the board this morning? This afternoon?
Adjourned, alright.
We'll adjourn. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Brandon, take care.
Thanks, Brandon. Alright. Yeah, that's normally what I do.
I was just like. Okay, I'm gonna shut the thing down now.
Awesome.